February 15th, this is the GBUS regular meeting at 7:00 PM. For some of this, the Girdwood Board of Supervisors and its committees and subcommittees are subject to the Open Meetings Act. Just remind people, my name is Jerry Fox, I'm co-chair and I am Roads and Utilities Supervisor. And we'll have everybody introduce the board introduce themselves, Mike?
Mike Edgerton, Co-Chair, Land Use Supervisor.
Aaron?
Erin Boone, Fire Department Supervisor.
James?
James Glover, Public Safety Supervisor.
And I didn't see, is Brianna on here?
Yes, Brianna Sullivan, Parks and Recreation and Cemetery Supervisor.
Very good. Disclosures, does anybody have any disclosures this evening? I do not.
I have one. The, the item later that Connor is presenting, if I think variants for hordes. I have, I do some work for IT for the architects.
I don't think it would influence the decision on the request for dimension variance. That's wasn't a problem.
No.
I would ask anybody who is not on mute to please be on mute if you're not going to be talking right away. So, any, oh, I know where we are. So, anybody else on the board have a problem with Mike's conflict? Hearing none, I'm going to go on. Any other disclosures? Hearing none, I am going to move to the agenda revisions and approvals. Let's start with tonight's February 15th regular meeting agenda approval. I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as written unless somebody has some changes.
Move to approve the agenda.
Second.
Well, just voice vote, all in favor say aye, aye.
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 Aye. Okay, next up, January 18th, 2020, regular meeting minutes approval. I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes, minutes as written unless somebody has a change.
Move to approve the January, the 18th regular meeting minutes.
I'll second.
We'll do a voice vote, all in favor say aye, aye.
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 Aye. Next up, January 25th, 2021, Municipal Muni and GBUS meeting minutes approval. Again, I'd entertain a motion to approve as written unless somebody has a change.
I move to approve January 25th meeting minutes.
I'll second that.
All in favor say aye, aye.
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 Okay, announcements, the public is encouraged to ask questions, provide comment. Please raise your hand and wait to be acknowledged, please keep your phone muted until called upon to talk. To help discussions stay productive, please direct your comments to the board rather than other members of the public and keep your comments focused on the business under discussion. Please be respectful of everyone's opinions. A public hearing regarding the renaming of the Girdwood Ball Field in memory of Slade and Mole will be held Tuesday, February 23rd from 6:00 to 7:00 by a teams. And there's a link there in the agenda for anybody would like to participate in that. We're going to start out with introductions, presentations and reports. So legislative reports, we start with Roger Holland or James Kaufman. Kyle, do you tell me if either one of those guys are on here?
I'm not seeing them, they can speak up if I'm missing them, but I don't see them.
I'm staffed for Representative James Kaufman and I'm here to represent him tonight in this meeting.
Oh, hi Matthew. Yeah, so do you have a little update for us?
Yeah, absolutely. And Representative Kaufman wanted to be here, but he had, he had a caucus meeting come up kind of on short notice from 6:30 to 7:30. So he's hoping to be able to try to catch the end of it, but depending on how late that runs, he may or may not jump in here a little bit later. But for the, the House of Representatives side, the speaker was elected and that's Louise Stutes from kind of representing the Kodiak area and she, well, the Committee on Committees was appointed today. And so that kind of is the next step towards moving to organize all of the rest of the committees to start to actually read bills across and kind of organize the house so that bills can get voted on and moved through the, the house. So that's kind of a, a big step in the organization process, which hasn't really happened yet. And everybody's kind of starting to come together to, to, to make that side of the, of the legislative body organized.
I have a question for you. Well, I noticed that. Uh, I'm looking at my thing here. I have a question. So my question is, is there any talk about still providing the governor with the emergency declaration so that the, we can do, we can mandate, mandate testing at the airports and we could get federal funding for all of our food stamps?
Yeah, so the holdup on, on kind of that so far has been the governor was issuing, you know, disaster declarations while the legislative body wasn't in session. And so now that the legislative body was in session, but the House wasn't organized, the Senate had passed that Senate, Senate resolution, kind of urging the governor to issue a new disaster declaration or emergency declaration. But now there's a, I believe it's Senate Bill 56, a bill that now that the, the House of Representatives is getting organized, it can actually start to move through that process. And so depending on which committees that gets referred to and how quickly, quickly they can move that through the process. I know the intent is to pass that to lengthen the disaster declaration because that's under the power of the legislative branch now. And there was a number of House of Representatives and Representative Kaufman was on that letter from the House of Representatives, kind of urging the governor to extend that. And so I know that the will is there and now the organization is getting there. Once the actual committees get all of their members assigned to them, I believe that the intent is to start to move that forward. Yeah. Does that, does that answer the question?
Yes, thanks. Do you have anything else?
If there's any questions, I'd be happy, happy to take them, but that's kind of, kind of my update right now is kind of getting the committees organized and then the real work of pushing the bills through those, sorry.
I don't hear any questions.
I have another question.
Go ahead, Aaron.
It's kind of related to your last question, Jerry. I'm just curious if, because of the, there will be a gap in the emergency status, will, will we miss out on federal funding or will that just be reinstated whenever we can get that back?
I do not believe so. And I know that the, the bill that is, that was put forward to the legislative body to extend that disaster declaration is retroactive if not passed by February 14th when that expired at midnight, that February 14th. So I do not believe so. Um, yeah, I, I don't, I don't believe so because that's that SNAP funding, the WIC funding and CARES Act money, all of that. The intent was if, if there's too big of a gap there, then I believe we would, but.
Okay, thank you.
I see that Senator Holland has joined. Do you want to have any, make a comment here, Senator Holland?
I had a half heard the, the answer, so I think I could guess what the question was. I apologize for running late now where you have the Finance Subcommittee meetings in the evenings. And, and that one, the, the Commerce, Community and Economic Development just ended like five minutes ago. But do me a favor, repeat the question. I know, I think we're talking about Senate Bill 56.
Yeah, I had just asked if, because there will be a gap in the emergency status of the state for COVID, I was wondering if we would miss out on any of that federal funding or if that would be reinstated?
From what I've heard from the Senate side, there is a lot of curiosity. We, we've been asking the governor's office to, to identify what the shortcomings were. There's a lot of legislation that has been picked up and pushed forward just with the idea of filling a lot of those gaps. Something that just came up probably four days ago was the eight million in SNAP funding that was identified as being funds that were at risk. So, and honestly, it's, what I hear most of is a lot of frustration because I think a lot of people don't really know what we're going to miss out on until we miss out on it. You know, what is going to be denied until it's denied? So, so it all eludes me right now. I tell you, I just walked out of like an hour and a half of just talking numbers. And, but the, there are a lot of pieces and parts of legislation that's in process trying to fill the gaps and make sure we, we don't miss out on as much as we can. The, and that was another question we had was we were pursuing SB 56 and then wondering what really would be the benefit of it because we didn't know how long it would take for the House to get organized. And we could see that there would have been a gap coming up. But honestly, I tell you, I don't believe anybody right now really knows what, what we could possibly lose out on permanently. There are clauses in, in 56 that talk about retroactivity, but you know, it's, it's maybe from our side of it, from the, from the state of Alaska side of it, but then federal funds, I don't know if they would consider that retro-activable, I guess if that's even a word.
Okay, thanks. Anything else? Not hearing any questions from anybody, I'm going to move on. How about Assembly members? I think John, you're on here. I don't know about Suzanne.
I am here. Hello, everyone.
Hi, John.
You know, a nice thing about Anchorage and the Assembly in our system is we have not enshrined a partisan system. So being nonpartisan, we are organized as soon as we are elected and seated in office. So we don't have those shenanigans of not being able to operate. So we did continue the emergency proclamation for Anchorage, which becomes more critical be when there is not one for the state because for FEMA reimbursement, they want to know, do you have an emergency? And if the state says, well, not so much, which is essentially where we are now. Anchorage says, yes, we do. So that, that's handy and that's one of several reasons to have an emergency proclamation right now. We extended it through April 16th, but it does leave the question that's very fair. When does it end? When do we no longer have a COVID emergency? So that's something that's really, hopefully we're getting close to that point, but, but exactly defining it is very tricky. We had recently, in our last meeting, Suzanne and Meg Zalatell and I are working on something and looking at. So, okay, well, if we end this emergency proclamation, which would be wonderful to hit that point, how do you bring, we could speed that change by bringing some of the emergency orders into the normal process of a normal assembly ordinance? And we started out with four. One is just the pause on the bag ban. Another is the ability of alcohol, you know, restaurants and bars to have kind of liquor to go if they do a meal. And also extending their premises so they can serve outside. And then we also had one that brought the mask mandate into code. And it seemed fairly self-evident to me in any way, kind of, you know, civics 101 that we should do things through a normal legislative process. But it was interesting, the pushback we got on the mask was, no, don't do it. It was interesting, we had a huge amount of feedback on it. When the mayor issues these mandates as an edict, you have no method to have any input on it. So we opened this up for public input and they said, no, don't do it. So it seemed odd to me. But anyway, that was failed. We voted that down. It was just, it wasn't clicking with people, but we have the other three coming up at our next meeting and we'll see what happens with those. There's Crime is Down, if you haven't seen it. We've got, which is good news, you know, we've been working to beef up the police for the entire five years, last six years really. And we're starting to see results of that, which is pretty nice. There's something that you may have read about, people are, it's, it's kind of come out in different areas, but the Assembly got raises and we actually got raises, a system for moving into raises last year, about this time. Was when I heard about it, I guess we were late January. And they roll in over time so that I think some people got it last, after last election. And then some of us get it after this election and then it goes up to higher amount, I think up to 60,000 a year next year. And I'm not a hundred percent sure on this. I haven't paid a lot of attention to it. And we've been in my time getting about $28,000 a year. And we have no control over that. People say, oh, you gave yourself raises during COVID and it does look really bad, but we have no control over it. There's a salaries and emoluments commission that decides what elected officials are paid. And we have no role in that. And Forstner, I asked last year, he says, this looks really bad with COVID and we're getting these raises. And we were told that's just the way it is. It happened, we, we can't postpone them or anything. So we are also building Assembly offices. So we're taking space we already have in City Hall and chopping it up into 10 offices there because we will have a 12th Assembly member after reapportionment. And also we're having, you know, build two offices out in Eagle River for those members. And, and so kind of combined with both of these, so as a philosophy, we also have something coming forward soon that changes so that within code and the budget, the Assembly is not called a department, but we are called a branch. And this really flows, all kind of works towards something that Felix has been really kind of working on at his time as chair. And that is we are a branch of government in a city that has a very strong mayor. And it is to kind of move towards professionalizing, being on the Assembly and paying and providing the resources so more people will do it. Because right now, if you don't have kind of a separate income, it's really hard. You can't have a true full-time job and be on the Assembly. And if you live off 28,000, that's fairly tight. So it, it kind of moves that way. And I, it's not something I really sought out in this course, but I can understand the rationale behind it. And I think ultimately it is better to strengthen the Assembly and, and give Assembly members the resources to, to be more effective in kind of our half of the government, balance of government. I'll just say one last thing, bonds, there will be bonds on the ballot and, which are fairly typical. And Girdwood won't pay in many of those. I think you still vote on them because it's a full faith and credit of the municipality. But there is one that I think you do pay on and I, I just emailed, I didn't get a response yet on whether or not, but that is for technology for the police department. And that includes body cams. You've heard about body cams, but this includes technology for 911, record keeping, including records for body cams. And the body cams themselves are fairly cheap, but that would be a lease. And it would be up to 1.8 million a year, cost you about $5.32 for every 100,000 in your house. So probably, you know, 20, $30 for a typical house in Girdwood, maybe 40. But that's something to look at carefully, you know, it's, it's leasing has become the paradigm more than buying. It's kind of like where we, like we used to buy micro, you know, Word and, you know, Excel and load it on your computer. And now you get Office 365 and just lease it essentially. So this technology is essentially there too. So that'll look, that's kind of a unique one on, on the ballot, but take a look at that. So anyway, that's some highlights of what's going on. Certainly be here for a while and hoping for questions.
Anybody have any questions for John?
I have a question on the last one on the, so that's not for the police service area? That's area-wide for the technology for the police?
It says area-wide and it also, as part of it, because that lease would cover some things that were to be purchased under a 2016 bond that was area-wide, then including EMS and stuff. Part of it is we won't sell those bonds for that amount. So, so it did. And I was looking at it just now, I go, and it says area-wide. So, and I emailed Alex Liv could have confirmed that and I haven't heard back. I also want to, one other thing, the HLB five-year plan is up for public hearing at our next meeting too. So if you guys have any thoughts on that, I haven't heard anything from anyone on that.
I think Prop 3 is area-wide. Is that, that's not the same as the technology one though?
Which is, I don't, do they have numbers yet, Prop 3, which is that?
It, well, it's the one where it's an area-wide for emergency services.
Yeah, if it's EMS stuff, that's area-wide.
Yeah.
And we're. Ambulances and stuff.
Get a truck up there. So that's another one that's.
You, well, they, they have been set, whatever they are, but you have your 41, that is on there. Yeah, that's on there. Michelle did a, a absolutely wonderful presentation or, or pitch for it at our public hearing.
Good. I noticed Suzanne joined. Suzanne, do you have anything to add?
Hi, good evening. Thanks, Jerry. I missed the beginning of John's. Did you already go over John, the CARES Act funds, the second round?
I did not. I saved that for you.
Oh, thanks. Well, then I'll, I'll mention a couple things. And that the municipality, some of you probably read about it, received 35 million as a second round of coronavirus relief funds. And it was given directly to the municipality from the federal government for rental relief. It can't be used for mortgage relief and that's a bit of frustration as the need is there in our community for some help. There is optimism that that will change, but nothing so far. Let's see, you talked about bonds and equipment. One that is getting some attention, did you talk about the Title 17 changes, John, with the leash law?
No.
No? Okay, so we haven't seen that yet on the Assembly. It's still being drafted by the Anchorage Health Department in conjunction with the Animal Control Advisory Board. But it came about, and this would be a tightening of the leash law because of complaints of loose animals in public, especially on trails. And what's drafted so far does specify the use of leashes in public places. And public comment was taken through February 5th, I believe. And so now the board and the Health Department are going through the comments and presumably continuing to draft the ordinance. And as I mentioned, it hasn't been introduced yet, but when it is introduced and it'll be set for public hearing and I imagine it will be a pretty robust conversation because we've already received some feedback on that. But in the draft, draft, draft ordinance, it defines public place to mean any municipal land as defined in section 25 dot 10 dot 010. It includes streets, sidewalks, trails, parks, playgrounds, sports fields, parking areas and any other public place which has not been designated as an off-leash area. So that'll be coming. And then I'll just mention that the FCC last month, that's the Federation of Community Councils, FCC, sent out a notice about signing up for the quarterly Anchorage Assembly newsletter. This is a pretty high-level newsletter that provides some status updates on goals that the Assembly worked on setting. I think that was last year. But if you would like to receive that newsletter, you can contact the Assembly at www.mas@muni.org to get on the distribution list. And I just would also add, and I think, I'm pretty sure John talked about this last time or at a previous meeting, that you can go directly to the Assembly page to sign up for testimony, to email, email us all at once. And then also to access some Assembly 101 videos that have, you know, good background information for folks who are interested in testifying or want to learn more. So lots of stuff on the Assembly webpage and you can get there. www.muni.org slash, well, actually just click on Assembly. And you can email us all or sign up for testimony and, and access other information. So that's all I have for now, Jerry. Thank you.
Thank you, Suzanne. Any questions for Assembly members?
I have a question about the, the leash, potential leash ordinance. Didn't it, wasn't there an earlier iteration of that where it looked like the rules were going to be somewhat loosened? Before the current round?
Like something that came before the Assembly?
Something that came, I think it looked to me like there was a round with, with public comment the end of last year where it looked like the rules were actually somewhat loosened. And I think there was backlash to that and now it seems like the pendulum's swinging in the other direction.
You know, I don't recall that specifically, Mike. Last year, there was a big focus on making some changes to Title 17 for animals that, for like housing requirement or kenneling requirements. And also due process for when an animal would be impounded.
Right, I do remember that, yeah.
Yeah, that was the focus. It very well may have been that, that started off. And, and these things in my time on the Assembly, I've noticed really, anything to do with Title 17 gets a lot of interest and.
Yes.
But I can ask because I'm curious now.
Okay, I think we'll move on.
Gary, can I throw in one last thing?
Sure, John.
I think you'd mentioned, we have the public hearing to name the ball field after Slade. And, and we are open for, for in-person testimony. So if anyone wants to come up and speak and, and I've asked, I've asked that a copy of that be made on nice paper and shiny. For his mom, should she be able to attend?
Thanks. Appreciate it. I'm sure we're going to have somebody. I don't know who, but.
If you know how to get in touch with his mom, she has called me and I, I can't find her contact, so.
John, I'll get it for you.
All right, thanks, Kyle.
Yeah, thanks. Thanks, Kyle. Okay, we're going to move on. Next up, supervisor reports. First up, public safety. James, you got anything?
I don't have anything, Jerry.
Is the chief on here? Chief Ashay, are you on here?
He was going to call in, but I held up.
The only thing I had mentioned and Kyle had mentioned in a correspondence, I had some talk that members of the public may have some questions about the funding for the alcohol tax. And I think Kyle has answered back that he's, he's worked on that a bit, but I don't have anything to report new on it.
I could just give a quick update on that and maybe people don't understand what it is too. There's a new alcohol tax coming in. It's a 5% tax on alcohol sales. And so that is primarily meant to fund a new mental health task force to help deal with cases that the police are at times not trained and maybe overwhelmed to deal with. And AFD is working with the Health Department to structure a, basically a response team that can go out and help deal with that. That is an area-wide tax. And so we have inquired with those, basically developing this program to have that service for Whittier Police. We have quite a few responses here where Whittier is responding to a mental health issue. And, and they recognize that they're not the best trained to deal with it and if they had better support, which I hope this response team can provide, that would be great if they can help us here in Girdwood and help Whittier Police out. So we're working through that.
Thanks, Kyle. And I assume that is just still in the initial phases.
Yeah, we heard that we might hear something by April as for what's being developed for this program. So we're, we're waiting till then.
Okay. Next up, Roads and Utilities, which is me. Go ahead.
Can I just, two things. I did have a question about, I've had some questions about parking along Garmisch. I think there's still, I don't know if people contact you directly, Kyle. I requested they contact you. But there's been some questions in the busy weekends we've had recently about whether, so my question, I guess, is whether we've, whether the parking restrictions on one side are actually being followed or whether we have some other issues there.
They are being followed for the most part on the one side, but people are parking on the other side. And I did receive a phone call today, so we will look at on the weekends redeploying temporary no parking signs in that area. We did send the road crew through there today to widen out that area and, and make it more possible. It was getting choked down with snow, so that.
Yeah, that was the other issue. Yeah, that was the other issue. It might be snow.
We will, uh, definitely redeploy those signs again.
Thanks. My other thing is it looks like Mr. O'Malley may be, uh, maybe asking, trying to ask a question.
I am.
Hi, Tommy.
Hi, um, I was, um, as a member of the Girdwood Forest Fair Committee in charge of permits and processes, I was contacted by Paula Birmingham of the Municipal, uh, Municipality of Anchorage Treasury Department about the new act alcohol tax, and this was back in November. She said that, um, it allows the municipality to collect a five percent of, uh, alcohol sold and served within the municipality. Um, she sent me a copy of the tax ordinance. Um, I told the, and this was, uh, regarding the Beer Garden at the Forest Fair. I told her that, uh, Forest Fair was already paying a per-tax or per-glass fee that we've always considered to be an excise tax to the Girdwood Parks and Recreation Department as required in our park permit. And I told her that, uh, I assumed that other events held in the municipality, um, who had beer gardens were already paying what amounts to an alcohol tax. Um, she was unaware of this arrangement between event promoters and the Municipal Parks and Rec Department. And she was unaware also that Girdwood had its own separate Parks and Recreation Department, and she didn't know that Eagle River had its own Parks and Recreation Department. I asked if the new tax, uh, alcohol tax meant that the events would be taxed twice, um, for the same sale, and she didn't know about that. So the Municipality of Anchorage Parks and Recreation Department has been collecting an alcohol tax, um, that may be illegal or whatever, but it amounts to about four thousand dollars for the Girdwood, uh, Parks and Recreation Department. This is just for the, uh, Forest Fair. There are other, um, places that sell alcohol in Girdwood, including the Merc, um, the, uh, the hotel, Aliaska Hotel, La Bodega, and then the, uh, Tassora Gas Station. That money, uh, that comes from these taxes, um, goes to the municipality now, and it's already starting to be collected. In the past, um, we've, uh, the Forest Fair has paid about four thousand, uh, from, uh, the three days of the Beer Garden sales. And I asked, uh, i- if this tax, this new tax would mean that that tax would be canceled out. And she didn't know that that had happened, or she hadn't contacted the Parks and Recreation Department to see, uh, whether they're gonna miss that money or not. Also, she said that the money that was collected from the new alcohol tax would be going to public safety, and she was unaware that Girdwood was outside the municipality lease service area. Um, and I asked her if the alcohol plaques, alcohol tax collected in Girdwood would go to our police. Um, she didn't know. And she hasn't, I asked her all these questions, and she hasn't responded since November. So I would like, I've talked to, um, uh, James Glover about this. I would like to make sure that the Board of Supervisors is aware that the municipality is collecting money, um, on alcohol sales here in Girdwood that may not be going to our public, uh, our public safety, uh, effort down here, because we do have, um, issues that this money could address. Uh, let me give you an example. I work at La Bodega, and on one shift on one day, uh, the revenues may be a thousand dollars. That would be fifty dollars, uh, towards the alcohol tax, um, times three hundred is fifteen hundred dollars, not very much. But al-, but, uh, alcohol sales at Aliaska may be more. The Merc may be more. You guys should be aware of this money that's being collected and maybe not coming back to Girdwood.
So Tommy, let me just interrupt a second. So, um, this was voted on by the municipality, and it was voted, you know, to tax this amount on alcohol. And John can jump in here. When it was taxed, that's one of the problems we have in Girdwood is that it's going to public safety and this task force that's helped, supposed to help with mental illness and addiction. And, you know, how do we get some of that share of that money? I'm not sure of that. And I, John, I mean, one of the ways we had talked about was maybe having, we're starting a, uh, mental health program within the clinic, that maybe some of that money could be funneled there. Do you have any idea?
Uh, a little bit. Um, the alcohol tax, actually the wording on the ballot was that it would go to all good things. It was a very broad list, and also public safety. So that was just one of many things. And an important caveat is it can't go to replace things that we already budget for. So if you already typically budgeted, you know, three hundred thousand, but it was five hundred thousand, whatever it is for Whittier Police, just for their general policing, it can't go to subsidize that, but it can go to new things like, um, mental health first responders. So I think that those would be available in Girdwood, and even turning an arm is certainly a, a given. But and the other things that we've allocated, uh, you know, are, are brought, things, you know, to help children for early education, things like that. There's a whole variety of things that are in there. And I don't have to listen in front of me, but I could, uh, get that together for you. But, but it is important. I mean, it should apply to the entire city, including you. Um, if there is a new program focused on the things that are in that alcohol tax at the clinic, I would think that would be reasonable, particularly if it's a new program. That's something that, uh, we could certainly, uh, make a pitch for. At this point, what we think we might get this year is fully allocated, but we expect it will grow over time. So it's something to continuously watch. And one thing on Tommy's point, I'll have to check on that, um, your tax, but we did put an exemption in there for nonprofits who are doing temporary alcohol permits. And there was, it was fairly limited, but it may be the Forest Fair gets underneath that, and you would be exempted from the, the tax, but I'll, I'll look into that.
Thanks, John. So I want to move forward. So if you can look into that, we'd appreciate it, and then, you know, maybe would give back to us on the next, uh, meeting or beforehand.
Sure.
Thanks. Okay, uh, next up, uh, Roads and Utilities, and that's me. And I don't have anything to report. We've got a little lull in our roads where we don't have a lot of ice and snow and everything, but we've had a very busy winter. So I, yeah, I don't really have anything to report.
Jerry, can I just, uh, add real quick? Um, the bid is going, we've sent the
Oh, yeah.
the new contract down to purchasing, and so the new five-year contract is with purchasing. And we hopefully will have it out here on the street at the end of February. Eagle River is out right now, so we'll probably go after Eagle River finishes their, uh, contract process.
Wow, I forgot about that. And what about Alberg?
In Alberg, oh, that's going, uh, out the bid. We're just waiting for final comments from, uh, uh, Department of Project Management Engineering, and so we're hoping that the last week of February, so actually we may have two items in purchasing and out at the same time.
Thanks. Okay, uh, next up, Parks and Rec Cemetery. Brianna.
Hey, uh, I actually have a really quick question and may follow through with that last one. The, was there an update since last meeting on parking along Alberg? Kyle?
I, I, I haven't had any update this time.
Okay. All right. So Girdwood Trails Committee had a meeting on the second of February and discussed the Alaska Long Trail Concept. And in Girdwood, this is the Iditarod Trail Southern Trek Route. Also, ideas for KMTA twenty-twenty-one grant cycle. The Memorandum of Understanding with Alaska State Parks is nearing completion. And this will allow Girdwood Trails Committee to work on trail segments on Alaska State Park land. That was two weeks ago update. Uh, the Trails Committee was given a thorough review and history by Kyle for requirements for reopening the hand tram. And it's quite extensive with, uh, up-to-date information there, and that's all in the minutes. Uh, the Girdwood Trails Committee also approved narrow gauge grooming in a loop outside the existing groomed area in Moose Meadow, similar to the old dog mushing route. And the Trails Committee was advised that Girdwood Parks and Rec is considering a location for a dog park. Also, the Cemetery Committee had a meeting on the fourth. There's not a whole lot different from the January update. But the Girdwood Cemetery is assisting with Eagle River and Virtue Wood effort to establish a cemetery north of Anchorage. H L B has given Eagle River a number of potential sites for their consideration, and that has been narrowed down. If you have any other questions, I'm here, and so is Tommy tonight.
Hearing none, I'll continue. Uh, next up is Fire Department. Erin.
I don't have anything besides what, what's on the agenda below, so I'll turn it over to Chief if, if she's on.
Chief, yeah.
Yes, I am. Um, I want to share screen here. I'm just working with Kyle and trying to share screen.
I gave you approval, so you may be able to do it. Let me stop share. You can do it.
Okay. Um, let's see if I can do that here. Not working. Um, okay, uh, it's not working. So, um, anyway, um, uh, so, uh, hello, uh, I wanted to mention our super good news about Rescue Forty-One, uh, getting on the area-wide bond. Uh, so, uh, that's a super fabulous opportunity for us to get, uh, Rescue Forty-One funded. Um, it is, uh, wrapped up with other items such as, uh, some, uh, public transportation, some ambulances. It's also, uh, with some school zone safety, um, items, but this is our one and only opportunity, other than trying to write grants, uh, to get, um, uh, Rescue Forty-One funded. Additionally, from that, uh, we put in with AFD and Chugiak, an extrication grant, um, to, uh, hopefully, uh, outfit the Rescue Forty-One, or in other words, our primary apparatus that does vehicle extrication on the highway, uh, with equipment, since our equipment is also twenty years old. Um, we have two new lieutenants, uh, one new engineer and, uh, six new members. Uh, we have gone on ninety-two calls in forty-six days, so two calls a day. And, uh, the AFD contract is, uh, moving slowly forward, I would say. Um, they've given us contract language to review today. Um, and we are working on negotiating a cost for, hopefully in time for first quarter budget revision. And then, uh, our big item that's sort of still left on the table is, of course, Engine Forty-One and approval to get Engine Forty-One funded. And let me see if I can now share the screen.
Uh, is that later on the agenda?
Is it?
It is.
Oh, then never mind.
Yeah, so let's talk about that when we get there.
Okay, uh, anybody have any questions, uh, for, for me? I should also mention it's also Heart Health Month, and so we're super excited to, uh, work with Aliaska Resort and, uh, their executive chef to do a heart healthy, uh, new Nordic Spa menu item on a Zoom, uh, class, uh, with Anchorage Fire Department. So super excited about that partnership. And just challenging you, we're all sort of reinvesting in heart healthy activities. Uh, here at the Fire Department, we did have one member go through heart surgery, uh, this month, uh, and so we are, uh, sort of focusing on our health. So I encourage you all in, in, uh, Heart Month to go out and, uh, exercise more and try some new healthy, uh, recipes.
Thanks, Michelle. Next up, Land Use. Mike, you want to cover everything under Land Use?
Yeah, I'll do this quickly because I see there's lots of people, I think, who'll be, uh, joining us for public comment. So just going through quickly, the, um, meeting minutes from, uh, the last Land Use last week. Uh, one thing that may be of general interest is the, uh, the initial survey, the contact, contact sensitive solutions, uh, report for the Aliaska and Seward Highway Intersection is out. The easiest place to find that is the, the project website, which is Seward Aliaska Highway Intersection dot com. Um, it's basically their initial, uh, initial findings about the intersection, some of the, um, potential paths they might follow. Land Use is also pursuing a land acknowledgement, and, uh, I want to big thanks to, uh, Donna Stram for leading that initiative. Land Use also adopted our, um, code of conduct, which, uh, we recently added to, uh, the GPOS rules, uh, procedures. Um, and they are also, uh, looking at, um, how long things stay on the pending agenda. So we've had this, especially with COVID, um, there can be initial presentations of projects. It takes a while for them to go through the permitting process before they appear before, uh, P and Z, where typically they would come back for a a second hearing, our local process. Um, and that can take many, many, many months. So we've had this parking space where, um, items which have been, um, had their initial presentation before are sort of parked in the agenda, and then can move straight to old business. Uh, some of those are getting a little long in the tooth and are in the multi-year space, so, uh, we're discussing, um, on L U C about whether there should be a sort of time limit before something has to come back through old new business. Uh, everything else we discussed is, uh, basically on the agenda tonight. Um, a quick update on Title Twenty-One, Chapter Nine, Parking Requirements. I have one item uh, later on, uh, in the agenda tonight to talk about, um, a resolution which supports the application. And then it should be going through the public process, um, through, uh, P and Z, it's through planning, P and Z, et cetera, as soon as that's done tonight. Housing Working Group had a, a, a good meeting, um, previous month, um, in January about, uh, alternative, housing options and alternative construction options, which was very productive. Um, and we, this month, we, uh, just gave a, a general update of various initiatives. What we're gonna try and do is pivot that towards, um, starting to work on a more formal plan, um, the Housing Action Plan, which should come out of the area plan work. We might, like Trails has been doing, we might try and see if we can, um, accelerate that by starting that work before the area plan is finished. Um, so watch for updates on that topic.
Thanks, Mike. Any questions for Mike? Hearing none, we're gonna move on to public comment. Persons offering public comment must state their full name and address. Public comment is limited to three minutes per person and must be on subjects not listed on the agenda. And this is a time, if you're running for office, you can make a little comment during public comment. So if anybody has any public comment, you can raise your hand. So I see Christina, you have your hand up. I'll start with you.
Thanks, Jerry. I appreciate it. Good evening, everyone. I wanted to let you know that the Girdwood Rotary will be hosting candidate nights on two separate evenings this next week. On the twenty-second, we have mayoral candidates from six PM to eight PM. And on Tuesday, the twenty-third, we have our G boss candidates from six to eight PM. The Zoom meeting information can be found on girdwoodrotary.org. And if you click on the calendar tab, it'll have that information for the evenings of the twenty-second and the twenty-third for Candidates Night. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Christina. Uh, next hand I see is Bill Falsy.
Thank you, Jerry. My name is Bill Falsy. I'm calling in from the Sand Lake area. I appreciate the chance to be back with all of you and with the listeners to Glacier City Radio. You're the next stop on this Traveling Road Show to many of the other boxes in Zoom. I have to apologize. You're hearing the same pitch over and over, but I will say, I'm Bill Falsy, and I'm running for mayor. And I'm doing that because I, no kidding, do believe that Anchorage's best days are still ahead of us. And I'm very invested in that future because this is my hometown. I graduated from Central and Diamond back in the day when Girdwood's kids went to Diamond, too. All right, my dad to Anchorage, uh, Bill Fals, whoever just asked who this was, that's still Bill Falsy. Uh, my dad was in, in the Air Force and took us here through Elmandorf. My mother was a special ed teacher at Rabbit Creek Elementary School. This is where I'm raising my two kids. Folks know, for the last five years, I've served the community most recently as municipal manager, where I oversaw police, fire, health, and other departments. And before that, I was a municipal attorney. I put in the work. I do know the ropes. And I'm looking ahead at the challenges and the opportunities posed by the post-COVID work-from-anywhere Zoom-enabled world and thinking that should play to our comparative advantage. We are a place where people want to be, a town that the world has discovered. But I also see that we have some tough days ahead of us before those better days to come. And fortunately or unfortunately, I have helped Anchorage through some tough times in the past. Folks saw me in the two thousand eighteen November earthquake, in the two thousand nineteen wildfire season, and in two thousand twenty, as the. And in 2020, as the incident commander overseeing our local on the ground response to the COVID-19 pandemic, where my job was to find and collect the gloves and the masks, get them to our healthcare providers and our first responders, establish isolation and quarantine facilities, stand up our broadly free and available testing sites. And through it all, go on television, try to explain to folks what we were doing and why. We got through those past challenges. We're getting through this one, while we're also delivering on the sale of M L P, the first pieces of the Port of Alaska Reconstruction Project and restoring law enforcement to Girdwood, the highway and the turning in armed communities after the troopers left. For folks who've followed my record, you know, I'm not really that interested in making political speeches. I'm more about getting things done. And we do have some work ahead of us. We got to champion the post COVID economic recovery, make real progress on homelessness, complete the port, preserve our public safety gains and make those quality of life investments that really are going to take us to the next level. Early childhood education, forging better partnerships with the university. So I appreciate the chance to briefly introduce myself and let you know how to find me. I put all my information in the chat, but Kyle Kelly has locked the chat down. So I'll just say Bill at FalsyForMayor dot com. And I'm happy to field questions. Mostly I am on the hunt for things that are of interest to your community and whether that's the housing crunch, Airbnb's presence, the fire department budget, secondary access, the new cemetery or bear resistant garbage cans. I am all ears and I'll pass along from the earlier discussion, the body worn cameras proposition is number four. And yes, Girdwood would pay as it is area wide in part because it also fills out a lot of the nine one one and data architecture for the police department, which is an area wide function. So again, thanks, Bill Falsy, Bill at FalsyForMayor dot com. I encourage you to check out the website.
Thanks, Bill. Next, unless anybody has any comments or questions for Bill. Hearing none, I'm going to move on. The next one is Carl Jacobs, running for seat G, I believe, at the school board.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Carl Jacobs. I'm one of the school board candidates for seat G. There will be four seats on the ballot. The upcoming municipal election and G will be at the very bottom. And so please do fill out the ballot all the way down as the those races are very important as well. Just a little bit about me professionally, I've served as a investigator and licensing specialist serving and protecting our vulnerable seniors and children located in residential childcare facilities and assisted living facilities. I've spent the last decade protecting those Alaskans that are underserved and it's been a privilege and I continue to serve in a variety of roles at present. With that said, I've also acted as a licensed therapeutic foster parent to approximately 40 children. My wife Alicia and I have four teenagers in the house right now. And so our grocery bills, as you might imagine, are significant, but we love what we do and we couldn't imagine doing it, not doing it. And I would say that the experience caring for youth from, you know, Nome to the Matsui Valley, from Sitka up to, you know, Kevick has provided a unique lens that we use to view things that the school district does very well, in addition to the things that it can improve in. My priorities as a candidate for CG include focusing on career and technical education and better preparing our children for life as independent Alaskans, addressing things like financial literacy, increased civic engagement and developing a career path that will provide them that independent life. I also intend to address our budget situation. Most folks realize that the district does have some sort of financial difficulties, but it was hearkening to hear that the the budget was balanced despite there being a $20 million plus shortfall. However, it was only done due to an influx of federal funding, which isn't likely to be repeated year over year. And so there are significant challenges awaiting our district in the next three years and who we elect will drastically change what education looks like here in Anchorage. With that said, I am asking for your votes. I intend to bring positive change, increase community engagement, accountability and leadership to the district. My campaign website is fairly easy to remember. It is Carl, C A R L, the number four Anchorage dot com. And that'll have my cell phone, personal email on there as well. Please do feel free to reach out. I'm asking you to help bring about that change by voting for me on or before April 6th. And thank you very much for your time tonight, folks.
Thanks, Kyle. Carl, any questions for Carl? Hearing none, we're going to go to the next one. Patrick Higgins, Anchorage School Board candidate.
Thank you. Normally I would know that the library, I mean, that the post office down there on Saturday is the best place to get in contact with people. I know Goodwood well enough for that, and I've always enjoyed it. I'm, I was a former school board member. I was on the school board from 2008 to 2017. And I liked the fact that we got some changes done. When I got on there, graduation rates went low 60s, dropout rate six and a half percent. There were key issues about curriculum such as everyday math that was an issue. A lot of other questions that were out there and a lot of those got addressed with a whole list of objectives and goals that the board approved that I recommended. We audited everyday math, found out it was a losing situation every place in the country. So we switched. The best place in the country was in San Antonio where it got average results. So we switched to improve that. We set higher standards than what the administration was comfortable with, but we drove graduation rates and cut, cut it from low 60s to over 80% during that time into the low 80s. We cut dropout rates by half. And we had people running after kids walking out of school saying, please stay. So it made a difference when you set high goals. But we did more than that. We were engaged in an audit committee and we, I was in charge of audit committee where we took on purchasing and we saved three to $500,000 every year thereafter by changing policies and procedures, what we did that made it more responsible, local and competitive, but it also cut operational costs. We caught operational costs nine years in a row. Today, the school board is not headed in that direction. They believe they shouldn't make changes in budgets. They shouldn't make changes in anything other than listening to the superintendent and approving it. And I'm frustrated. I will say this, that when you listen to the voice within the community and you're a voice for it, it makes a difference. And I'll bring this one home to Goodwood. I was the representative to your, to Goodwood when they were redoing the schools, building, building the school construction there. And they were going to hold back the track above the gym area because they wanted to wait and do it later. And it would have been stupid to do it. Heard from Goodwood, it was going to cost more later. It was more effective to do it then. And so I working with the school board persuaded them and we pushed it to go ahead and get it done then. But that's listening to the public and being a voice on the board rather than just being a rubber stamp from the superintendent. So I, I really want the school board to be active like it was before. They've got some serious issues. We've got drops in our academic scores between fourth and eighth grade. I'm telling you, we led the country and and great city schools and the academic growth there and it's coming down. We've seen a decline in the academic rose in 2019. This is pre, pre pandemic. And we needed to focus on changes like the reading curriculum that's driving the scores down. We're hearing it from parents. We're hearing it from, from teachers and there's nothing being said from the board. They need to push the administration to have a look at this and see what the changes are. It's been 2020 since the last academic review of the curriculum. We need that. But we need to reestablish the audit committee. The board needs to be active again. So that's why I'm running. I know what a board can do and I see what the board isn't doing today. It needs to be a voice. It needs to be the voice of the public and and the staff and the students. It needs to put kids first and not just simply rubber stamp stuff. If you want to change this, it's the time to do it because right now it's a very split board, but we need to have people listen to on the board. And so I'm, I'm begging you to vote for the, for the candidates who are out there that are trying to bring about a change. I'm the candidate that has the knowledge of how it can be done, what the expectations are, and I know we can get it done. Thank you.
Thanks, Patrick. Any, I don't see any other hands for public comment in case anybody can't figure out how to raise their hand. Oh, Kaylee.
Hi, this is actually for both score, school board candidates and I'm, it's just a question about the vaccines. The state has recently opened the availability up to teachers and I'm just wondering if that speaks to the wisdom of having teachers vaccinated before or as soon as possible as kids are getting back to school.
Okay. So that's the question. Yeah.
Yeah, I'd like to hear both of your opinions on it, I suppose.
Okay, so what's the question?
Are you muted?
Yes, I'm muted.
So while, while Pat's getting the question, Kaylee, I can take a stab at it. Yeah, I will say that getting teachers vaccinated was a great step. It was good news. I've spoken with many of them. I've actually been endorsed by the Anchorage Education Association, which represents about 3,000 A S D educators. And so I've been asking and advocating for that step to be taken for a couple of months now. The school board met with the legislature to talk about their priorities and there wasn't any significant dedication of time to encouraging our elected officials to use their voice to address the committee, which made that decision. So I think more could have been done to get it sooner, which in turn would have avoided some of that hand wringing that we saw in our community as to, you know, keeping schools open or keep getting the classrooms back open versus keeping them closed for safety. Having vaccinations in place would have avoided some of that. And that's that leadership aspect I mentioned. It's, I think it's important that we have folks who are willing to speak out and willing to do the hard work. Attending community council meetings are a great step, but those other additional meetings, you know, the, the leadership of the board occurs more than just the two Tuesdays a month that a board meeting happens that the public can attend. And so that's why who is elected and who's serving on the board this May is going to be critical. So.
Thank you, Carl. That was the gist of my question or discussion I wanted to hear. Thank you.
So we have another school board member on here that has trouble raising her hand. So I am going to ask, call on her first and then we'll go kind of back to questions. So Dora Wilson, are you here?
I am. Thank you. I apologize. I was trying to physically raise my hand, but it wasn't working. I just wanted to introduce myself and I appreciate your time and you allowing me to introduce myself. I am running for school board F, F as in Frank, for the Anchorage School Board here in the upcoming municipal election. I'm a mom of three. I've had three kids go through the Anchorage School District. They're now young adults, each finding their own path and doing wonderfully. I'm a therapeutic foster parent. I've been a foster parent for the past 16 years. So I've had kids in the Anchorage School District for the past 20 years and I actually still have kids in the district. I'm co-founder of a nonprofit called AK Hopes and Dreams. We provide youth leadership summits to high school students free of charge, thanks to our sponsors. And we focus on things that students have actually indicated that they want to learn more about that they have not learned about in school, like financial literacy, career opportunities, lots of other things. We do a lot of networking skills with them. So it's, it's a great opportunity to give them skills, leadership skills that they are asking for and really want and don't feel like that they have been able to access in the school setting. I've also worked with our school business partnership program for the past 20 years as a board member, coordinating, coordinating school business partnerships, setting up partnerships, new partnerships. I really, it's truly a labor of love. I've done district wide partnership activities and have been to Girdwood schools and they really appreciate my presence. When I do go, they say that, you know, sometimes they feel like they're a little like the redhead stepchild, so to speak. So they really appreciate when the partnerships reach out to them and include them in activities. So that's always really nice. I'm really advocating for career and life readiness. That's one thing that I have worked my entire career on is advocating for apprenticeship, advocating, working with the district to set up on the job training. Our kids, 30% of them choose four year degrees. So there are 70% of them that really need to understand what kind of jobs in life readiness is necessary to go out into the real world and, and start being productive citizens. And so the earlier that we can engage those kids in future careers and opportunities, the more they will be engaged in school. So that's really important. I'm also advocating for transparent communication. This past year has been really tough for families. And we need to improve the partnership. And I feel like it's a school board members partially their job to reach out to community organizations, to reach out to leadership in the community to get them incorporated into the school district, get their ideas, their families, the buy-in to, to be productive and to try to find ways to have our kids be more successful. So I'm, I'm excited about the partnership portion of that. I love the outreach. And I feel like I can provide a lot of perspective to the school board that is currently not sitting there. So if you have any questions, you can please reach out to me. Please go to my website, learn more about me. You can find more information at www.dora wilson for school board dot com. So again, thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you. Mike, did you have a question?
I was just gonna make the comment that I saw Dora with her hand up.
Oh, got it.
Once a chair, always a chair.
Okay. I think we're gonna move on. So any other public comments? Hearing none. I am going to move on. We're going to move to old business. So old business, number three, G P O S updates. Girdwood Community Council Structure and Procedure for Out of Service Area Request. Are you going to talk on this, Mike?
Yeah, sure. I'll start this. So we've gone through, along with L U C, we're going through reviewing all of the sort of processes and procedures we have. And what we identified was that although we have special provisions for for conditional use permits, there's a lot of other things as well that come through on the land use site and go through L U C and G P O S, which we don't specify. And we should. So Marco Zakaro and I have taken on the task of sort of expanding that, making it more user friendly and having a document that we can share hopefully between both the L U C and G P O S, sort of explaining in, in clear language what our local process and procedures are. So we're prioritizing that over the more general question of, of the other processes and procedures. So once we've tidied that up, which we know people come through, we know there's, there's a confusion, then we'll deal with the rest. So basically, we're not going to work on this for the next couple of months until we, until we deal with the the sort of other local processes that are clearly within the L U C framework first, and then we'll move on to the remainder things. So the update is we're not going to do anything right now. We're going to focus on the more proximate issues.
Any questions for Mike?
We may actually want to have to expand this out to cover both of those topics in the future. That's just really a comment for staff.
Both of which topics?
Sorry, both the, both the out of area service area requests and the requests which are definitely within the land use and G P O S sort of remit. So things beyond conditional use.
Okay, we'll add it in.
Thanks.
I see Christina, you have your hand up.
Thanks, Jerry. I appreciate the recognition. Mike, I just want to advocate that if you guys are waiting for a couple of months that the working meetings that might provide with the context of what's being changed and potential recommendations don't occur during the summer season. That might not receive the most amount of stakeholder engagement at the local community level, similar to our budget processes usually going through at the summertime. I think it would be valued to have a lot of more input during the early fall season when we return. So just my comment towards your timeline, that's all.
Thanks, Christina. I appreciate the comment. I'm hoping we can get to it before the end of spring. So I'm thinking sort of, you know, April might be optimistic, but definitely by May. If that's, I guess that's some kind of a very early summer. I was hoping we could at least get another community's discussion going in the May time scale.
Okay. I have a question.
Go ahead, Erin.
I was going to suggest that we maybe remove the Girdwood Community Council structure from the agenda because I know it's been brought up, it's been on the agenda for several months. We've had a few comments from the community, but I've heard more about keeping the existing structure than changing it. So I just thought that we could remove it.
Mike, you have a comment?
I think it's a fair comment.
Christina, you have a comment? Christina, you have a comment?
Thanks, Jerry. Appreciate where Erin has heard only from one side. We did have meetings about this in Q4 of 2020. And then there were a couple, a meeting that I believe, unfortunately, Mike was absent due to an illness, and there wasn't any follow-up. And I encouraged the chair at the time, Jerry, to keep it on the agenda, because we hadn't really had a full report out on what had been discussed at that meeting, which did include changes to the existing structure. So having not been engaged at the community level since that working group meeting in Q4, I'd really encourage it be kept on the agenda so that we can have another meeting where other voices can be heard and there be some sort of compromise and recommendations put forth to this board for consideration.
It's possible. I'm not going to speak for Erin. It's possible Erin has only heard from one side of it. I've heard from both sides of it, and I've heard far more voices. You know, while it's not a scientific survey, I've heard far more voices saying, keep the structure, than voices saying, don't keep the structure, change it. So we absolutely, as I said, will be having this conversation in the future. I think it's, I think the statement of it is just about the good with community, a potential good with community council structure or a change to it is too narrow a scope. It should be part of it, but it's too narrow a scope.
And my comment would be, if we're not going to talk about it for the next six months, I think we should take it off. If we are, we can keep it on, but I, we leave it on there, but we never talk about it. And I, I have the same response that Mike has, that I've heard from both sides and the majority of people that I hear from like the system we have in place now. And that's just my comment.
I have my hand raised, Jerry.
Okay, Christina, go ahead.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I would say that the anecdotal I've heard from the majority, and this is how I feel, and this is why I'm going to take it off of the agenda, is arbitrary and would greatly appreciate a more refined approach when we bring up a topic that has been duly investigated upon by members of our community that have said it doesn't work for them and have provided alternatives and additional, almost like down to the academic, this is why rationale behind it ought not be so dismissive of, well, I've heard from the majority, and I don't feel like this is appropriate. I think that really blurs the lines of the ethics of the Girdwood Board of Supervisors. It would encourage a follow-on meeting to iron that through rather than shutting it off the agenda tonight and sweeping it under the rug as well. The majority feels this way, therefore it doesn't need to be addressed.
Anybody else have any comments, the board?
I think we're talking about different types of anecdote, aren't we? And I just heard another anecdote about what some, some people have a particular opinion. I don't think anyone's done a broad survey. I mean, I would suspect that if this actually comes to action, we would want a community-wide, at least advisory vote, like has been done in the past. So I'm sure these questions will be answered if it ever gets to that point. But I mean, I'm just saying that I think.
To come to that conclusion.
Finish, please, Christina. Can you let me finish, please? Thank you. I think the point I would make is focusing on one aspect of the question is overly narrow. So we should, at the minimum, have, have it described as all the things we're looking at, of which this may or may not be part. So I'm just asking for broadening, broadening the description of the item.
Christina, you have a comment?
Yeah, and I'm just asking for it not to be dismissed. So narrow, broad, arbitrary, capricious, anecdotal, actual survey, this still is a topic of discussion within the community. And if it's going to be removed from a GBOS agenda, I'd like to see it reflected in a land use agenda moving forward. Thank you.
And.
I believe it is in land use.
I think we did it in land use. That's the thing.
I believe it is in land use, yep.
It was like four months, three months ago where they had a vote to keep the structure as it is in land use. I mean, I'm not positive of that. Again, you can correct me if I'm wrong.
I don't recall, I don't recall a vote on it in land use. We've had the discussion through land use and joint meetings. So I believe it is on the land use agenda.
So how are we gonna move forward here? Does anybody, do you want to just leave it on here? And I don't really care.
I would.
I would. Sorry, sorry.
I was gonna suggest it going back to land use if it hasn't been fully discussed. Like I said, at GBOS meetings, I've heard two, maybe three people who have ideas different than, or would like the system to change. And so if it needs further discussion, I think land use would probably be a better place where it could be one person, one vote if there was something to vote on before it comes back to GBOS.
Does that make sense to you, Mike, as the land use supervisor?
Yeah, it's explicitly mentioned in land use agenda, and I think that will continue in the land use agenda. I'd just make this, I'd make this more general under GBOS agenda.
Okay. I don't know if we've resolved anything here, but I'm gonna keep moving here. We got a lot, we got a lot on the agenda. Item number four, Girdwood Fire and Rescue Updates and Requests. Update on MOA GFR contract with, for EMS. Update on area-wide bond to replace Rescue 41, which we know we have the bond, and discuss and vote to approve funding option to replace Engine 41. So for starters, let's talk about the contract. And Chief, do you want to give us a little update? I know we're supposed to have something by Friday for sure.
Yes, so I have transmitted a proposed number again to the municipality of Anchorage regarding what it would take to provide funding, increased funding for us for EMS. For those people who aren't familiar with the contract negotiations, what we're doing is we're asking for the ability to have area-wide EMS funded to an appropriate level. So we are able to have EMS and fire protection at the same time. What often happens, unfortunately, in our community is when we have multiple EMS calls, sometimes even when we have one EMS call, we lose our ability to provide fire protection to the community. And that is just really related to a, unfortunately, lack of funding and staffing. So what we're trying to do is fix it. So we have enough funding to have one staffed ALS ambulance, Advanced Life Support Ambulance, in the community at all times. And then the second ambulance, and I've also asked for funding for eight hours of a second ambulance during periods of time such as holidays and weekends. An example of this would be today, when, within a period of 20 minutes, we had two code red calls. Code recalls are, you know, very serious calls, medical calls that happened at the same time. And it's a holiday today. So of course, there's, you know, twice as many people in the Girdwood community that might need care. So that's what we've asked for. Additionally, with area-wide EMS, I want to point out something. As you know, in the last year, we've had a lot of people now using Portage, the Portage Lake as a recreation destination. There's also now a lot more people fat tire biking and skating down the frozen rivers and turning an arm, all of which is, you know, gonna put pressure on our EMS system. And so I'd like us to be able to have enough funding so we're able to provide fire and EMS protection at the same time.
So Erin, do you have anything, any other information from the municipal staff? You know, like when we would get a number or anything?
Um, let's see.
I know that Anna wrote back at one point and said, by this Friday.
Yeah, she asked for AFD to submit a proposal for Girdwood EMS no later than this Friday, this coming Friday. And the deadline for first quarter budget revision is February 26th to OMB. So I was curious, Michelle, have you gotten any indication from AFD when you would hear back?
No, I have not. They were not working today because, again, it's a municipal holiday. So I'm expecting to hear back from them tomorrow. I mean, they are working, but the budget analyst is not working today. And so I would expect that we'll hear back tomorrow. They did get a first round of numbers, of which they then asked for a lot more work, which was then provided to them, and now we're waiting for that response.
Okay. Yeah, so I guess we'll just have to closely monitor it this week. I mean, maybe prompt them if we don't hear from them by midweek or?
I've prompted them almost on a near daily basis. So I'm kind of, I think that at this point, they have all the criteria they need to make a determination.
And I've spoken with Annie, and she is well aware that you guys are watching this and that you are aware that Friday is the deadline and that you're expecting something coming out of Friday. So I'll keep you in the loop as to what I hear. And like, like you said, Annie has set a deadline with AFD to get her something to review. So AFD needs to pull that off this week. And if we don't hear something by that, I told, she, Annie's well aware that she'll probably get a phone call from either one of you on Monday asking for an update.
And then I just want everybody to understand that, you know, we've heard in these meetings with the municipality that if we ask for more money for EMS for the southern part of the valley, or the certain part of the municipality of Anchorage, then we're taking it away from other parts of the municipality or other parts of EMS. I would like to share that my personal position on that, it might not be the view of anybody else, is that if area-wide EMS is not funded appropriately, then the municipality needs to fund area-wide EMS appropriately. And I think that we all, as citizens that pay into area-wide EMS, need to have, deserve to have the same level of service for area-wide EMS as the other parts of the valley, of the community, of municipality. And that I don't think that it's fair that we keep having to lose fire protection because we have to subsidize our area-wide EMS coverage in a visitor destination mountain resort community.
So I'm gonna ask about, let's assume that we get a number before Friday, and it's more than what we're getting now. Is there, Kyle, or maybe even John is still on here? What do we need to do to make sure this gets on the first quarter revisions? I mean, just because the fire department in Anchorage says, we're willing to give you more, does that mean it gets on the first quarter revisions?
Well, what, what happens is, since this is an area-wide aspect, AFD will propose the number to Annie, the city manager, and OMB, Operation Management and Budget. And they will need to figure out how they're gonna fund it. Because area-wide is a large fund, you know, that it funds libraries, it funds the dog catcher, it funds all kinds of things. So they will need to look within that budget to figure out how they do this increase out there. And so that, that will be up to her. So she's gonna need to see what that number is, and then they're gonna have to dive into the numbers. But the, the thing to keep in mind is that the deadline is what us as staff and departments have to give to OMB to start the process. And then the assembly doesn't really approve first quarter revisions until after the new, after the elections have been certified. And in most years, this year, there's no new assembly members. But usually when new assembly members come on, one of their first votes and one of the first things they deal with the first night is first quarter revisions. So there is some time still between when the numbers are submitted and when the final packet is sent to the assembly for them to work that out. So, so it'll be very important, I think, right away to know that they've gotten a number from AFD and that, and then working with Annie, who will be working with OMB to figure out how they can fund that increase.
And so, you know, this is something that, you know, I've been working on for five, five and a half years. And so I'm really hoping that we can come to some resolution here in the next month.
I would say you're closer than ever right now.
And if we don't, I think we have to make the decision where we tell the assembly that we are not going to support EMS on the highway.
Yes.
It's outside of our district.
And I think that's the decision that between the Girdwood Fire Board and GBOS, they have to make a determination as to what they can afford to fund for EMS coverage. And that may be staying within the borders of the service area.
So, you know, John, if you're on here still, this is a, this is a big issue for us. And we got to get it resolved, and hopefully we will in the next week and a half. But if we don't, you're gonna hear from us.
Well, we'll see what AFD does. I think you're doing a great job, and it's been kind of a drumbeat for a while, like you said. But I think Michelle's really kept it on the front burner, doing a great job at that. And we do have the ability to make amendments, you know, up to the last minute. And that's months away from now. So hopefully we won't have to do that. But, but that's certainly something available.
Thanks, John, and thanks for still being around. Appreciate you being around. Any more on the contract negotiations? If not, we're gonna move on to update on area-wide bond to replace Rescue 41. I don't know that we need to talk much about it. It's on the bond, right, Michelle?
It's on the bond. Super happy, super excited. I hope people will vote for it.
And you did a great job, as John said, presenting to the assembly. So thank you. We appreciate taking the time to go to town and with all the work you have to do.
It was a tough crowd.
Assembly sometimes is.
I was just, I was just gonna say, I was watching the assembly meeting, and I think it's the, it was the only point at which every single member of the audience seemed to agree with something.
I can't be charming when I have to be.
Next, we're gonna talk about discuss a vote to approve funding for option to replace Engine 41. And we had something in the packet. Kyle, are you gonna talk to this apparatus?
Michelle, can I take back host?
Yeah, but then can I get it back after?
Well, you want, you want to go, what do you have here?
Sure. Can you, can you, can you see the picture of the apparatus?
Yes.
Okay, this is Engine 41. This is what we're talking about. It might, because she's very well-maintained, because we're super meticulous, she's still 20 years old. I want to tell you other things that happened 20 years ago. So 20 years ago, here's me on the fire department when Engine 41 happened. Look how young I looked 20 years ago. Other things that was happening 20 years ago. Mayor Maestram was the mayor. Tony Knowles was the governor. The Matrix, the first movie came out. SpongeBob SquarePants also came out, also Austin Powers. And then also the Bill Clinton fiasco happened. So that's everything that happened 20 years ago. It might seem like, oh, 20 years, it's not that long ago, but look at me, I look so young. It was a long time ago. So just like I look more, have aged, also Engine 41 has aged. And then I also wanted to just remind you that NFPA 1901 recommends that apparatus greater than 15 years old should be in reserve status. We've got ours at 20 years still functioning. But, you know, she's almost at end of life, super close. So, and it takes two years to actually get a apparatus, once you get it ordered, to come online and in service. And I'll stop sharing.
Okay, so let me pull up a screen here. So Girdwood Fire has requested, as Michelle just pointed out, to replace Engine 41. It is looking at a basis between 900 to 950,000. The apparatus itself would probably cost about 850,000. And there's about 100,000 in equipment that goes with it, which includes radios, tablets, communication devices, the different apparatus, like hose and things like that, ladders, would be added to, to this new vehicle. And so for the service area to replace this, then we would look at what we, the municipality has is a, is a loan program. Basically, it's almost like a vehicle loan program where we would put down a certain amount, and then we would just make quarterly payments over either a five-year or seven-year term to pay off the apparatus. We had just recently finished. We had just recently finished with a loan, or excuse me, a bond payment on one of the apparatuses for the fire department. We just finished that last year. That was 20 years. This would be a much shorter term. And actually, right now, these loan rates, because interest rates are so low, they're better than actual municipal bonds. And so as a service area, we have this function to do this. The city does use this, use this internally to buy things for AWU, like vehicles, and they just did a LED light project with, with a loan like this, and it's through KeyBank that they use. So we have two options, a five-year and a seven-year, and the two would, you know, you go to seven-year, you're paying more interest over time, but your quarterly payments are less. So we are proposing using 350,000 from the Gerwood capital count, which would pretty much dry that camp, that, that capital account up. And then $600,000 loan to get us to the amount that they need to purchase this new apparatus. And so what's before the board tonight is to consider what length and term you want. Suggesting recommendation from staff is to follow the seven-year term. We can always pay these loans off early. There's no penalty for early payment. And it does give us a little more flexibility on our quarterly payments and our yearly budgeting. Wouldn't be as high on it. So this would be put into the operating budgets each year and, and most likely collected through property tax for the department. Now, how, how does that affect the property tax? Well, right now, the, 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 excuse me, the the fire department is already collecting a capital contribution each year. Right here, down here on the second yellow line down, contributions to other funds, that's the capital contribution that we collect each year, and we put into the capital account for the fire department. Now, the last two years, that fund has come in to cover the shortfall that the fire department's been dealing with in relation to the EMS shortfall that they've been receiving from area-wide budgets. And so there hasn't actually been a capital contribution for the last two years. So that is something we're hoping will be addressed through this budget review for EMS funding to the fire department. And if that can be properly funded, then this fund here can be used to either, one, be used for payment towards the engine on a yearly basis. We would have to increase it to catch up to that seven-year term, which would be about 92,000. And, or two, it should be considered maybe adding a separate line item just for the capital, for the payment on Engine 41, and keep this contribution going forward for the fire department so that we can continue to regrow that capital account. The fire department's going to have other apparatuses, you know, as they grow in age that need to be replaced. And so it'll be important to keep funding that so that we have a fund that grows there. And, and, and what I mean by capital replacements can be anything from a, a new suburban for utility use or turnouts for personal protection for the firefighters. Those type of things, they can be big and small. You know, a fire department is an equipment-heavy department, and there's always standards that they're trying to keep up with, and things do age out. So it's always good to keep a capital count growing for all our departments, especially for the fire department. So, so I guess two things to start with. One would be where the board may has a discussion as to what they would want to follow a five-year or seven-year term, if they have any interest in replacing Engine 41, and, and what to do with the budgeting so that we can, we can either keep contributions going to capital, or we turn the contributions into just paying off the engine over seven years. So.
I have a question about that second one. The budgeting, whether it, you know, whether we continue to have a capital account and have a separate line item for the payment of the loan, should we approve one? Would that be better served making that decision during the budget process this summer?
Well, so if you pass it tonight, and if you, I mean, you can delay this loan until 2020, but if we pass it tonight, then we'll probably start the process to acquire the loan tonight. I mean, this immediately, which means we probably start making loan payments maybe in second, third, and fourth quarter. And, and then the department would start moving on that. It would be when, whenever we get the purchase completed and the money transferred to the manufacturer of the apparatus, then we would start making payments on it. So for us, we would need to consider in the short term as to what we want to do for first quarter revisions so that the, the budget is reflecting all the expenses that we're trying to cover.
One of, one of the reasons I was pushing it out through the summer is just, even if we don't push it out to the summer, we push it for another month to see what the EMS funding is, because that will make a big difference on the budget.
Correct. And so you could delay the decision on this until we know the EMS, and to do a special meeting to make a decision as to what you want to do with the, the line items here in the budget. But it'd be good to know if the board is, if the board is approving of seeking a loan to replace this apparatus, so we can really put that in our thinking, and then let's get that process initiated so that we're know we're ready to go when things are approved.
Mike, you had a comment?
Yeah, I had several comments, but I'll actually take the, the response to something Kyle just said. So I think it would be really helpful to, to understand the timing of this, because Chief Weston said about two years before delivery. So I'm wondering if, you know, does everything get paid upfront? Is there some other process? When would we actually need to, to not slow down the process of replacement? When would we actually have to take the loan out and start paying? So that's my first question. The second thing is, I did a very quick calculation, and obviously, there's, there's danger in doing any math during a GBOs meeting, but it looks like the, the seven-year would cost us about 2,000 a year, $2,000 a year more, which looks, is pretty insignificant in the bigger picture. So I think the flexibility that gives us is, makes it a, the obvious choice. So I would be recommending the seven-year term of the loan. And I feel we can, at least we can go ahead and vote on this in principle, even if we don't decide to act on it immediately. I'd like a little bit more information about timing, and definitely get visibility of what the funding situation is going to be for this year for EMS before we make a definite commitment.
I would say on timing, we would need to, we would need to secure the loan and be prepared to make probably a substantial down payment for the apparatus in advance before it's manufactured. Each apparatus is manufactured upon demand. And so, so we would have to secure the loan. So we would not want to know that the, that the service area is fully committed to the cost of the loan and repaying it. So as to when payments would start, that I don't know the answer on that yet. It's, there's a lot of factors. You know, you know, if, for example, if the fire department chose to go with Pierce, Pierce could be backlog for several months because of COVID. Who knows? Those, those things haven't been digested yet, but, but yeah, that would be determined. Now, one thing I didn't mention, and I just thought of it, and I had in my notes here, was that we could always pull money for the first year from the undesignated account to use for the loan payments that we may have to incur this year. And so we could just keep the budget as is, and then look towards the, the undesignated account to pull that money out after the first quarter revisions, if we, if we can't get it confirmed before the deadline for first quarter revisions.
And, and so just, just a few thoughts on everything. You know, we are going to start spec writing and working on specs. And so we are probably three to four months out of having it actually go to purchasing, municipal purchasing. But at that point, when it does go to municipal purchasing, they won't even accept a project until, because they say, show me the money, right? So definitely at that point, we have to have our ducks in a row, but we do have, you know, maybe a couple of months of wiggle room, if you wanted to push it another month. But it would, but, you know, we're going to go ahead and start spec writing for both Rescue 41 and Engine 41, just to have it sort of ready to go.
Thanks, Michelle. Erin, you had a question, comment?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, in general, I'm in support of getting a loan to buy this piece of equipment. I have some questions too, and Michelle just kind of touched on it, but I was just thinking, I wonder if we could, since there's like a two-year lead time, if we could make a down payment with the money that we currently have in the capital account, and then where we wouldn't take the loan out until we need it, like when we receive the apparatus. And then we would be paying a lot less interest for less time, possibly.
I guess it's sort of a dance, you know, right now, the interest rates are as low as they're probably going to be. They could go lower. I don't know how much lower they could go, but it, it's, it's a good time to take out a loan on it. But yeah, there is approach you could do in, in the sense of using the capital fund to secure the, the down payment, and then just go for the loan when we, we get closer. But I think like Michelle pointed out, we would not have all our purchasing and all our funding in place before it went out to bid, so that purchasing has full security that we're prepared to pay for this thing.
Okay.
So any other questions or comments? Mike, do you have another comment?
I do have another comment. So it definitely seems to me, given the uncertainty of the EMS funding for this year, I think it probably is a little premature by just a few weeks to make a definite decision on this item. But I think we, if we don't make a decision tonight, we have to commit to making a decision at the next meeting.
I, my thought is, we could make a decision tonight as to whether we're in favor of getting a loan for, and purchasing a new fire truck for the fire department, and then where the funding comes from and how the funding is done, we could do at a later meeting. Does that kind of make sense? I mean, Kyle, you're asking kind of for, to get this process moving.
Correct. We, we don't have an official position from the board as to if they support us, you know, replacing this engine, and, and then using a loan to help fund that, depending on what that is. I, I agree, there's still a lot of unknowns related to the, the, the details of, of the apparatus and how things will, will go forward. But if anything, we just need to know what the money's going to, where the money's going to come from to fund this, this purchase.
Can I make a motion then? So, yeah, I, I would make a motion that a good board of supervisors supports the idea of replacing Engine 41, payment being a combination of our existing capital account for the fire department and a seven-year loan. The source of repayment for that loan to be determined during our budget process.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, further discussion. I'm in favor of it. That's about, I mean, like Kyle says, the interest rates are low. If we're going to do it, we should do it now. And we need a new fire truck someday. It's, we should get it done. Any other comments? Hearing none. Kyle, this one's important enough, you better call a roll.
Okay, roll call. Jerry Fox?
In favor, yes.
Mike Edgington?
Yes.
James Glover?
Yes.
Aaron Boone?
Yes.
Brianna Sullivan?
Yes.
Motion passes, 5-0.
Okay, we're going to move on. Next up, agenda item LUC 2012-06, review updated request for GBS resolution of support for text amendment to allow use of recycling drop-off on land designated.
Oh, you skipped one. You're item five.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. Discuss first quarter revisions. Fire Department 2021 budget, Parks and Rec Summer Staffing, and Whittier Police Contract Consumer Price Index. Kyle, I assume you're talking to this one?
Sure. So Fire Department, that is on hold. I think we discussed it in detail here. We're waiting on those EMS numbers from AFD. And so we will have a better picture on that, so we'll, we'll keep that on the agenda. Parks and Rec, we do not perceive any changes. One problem that we are working through is that the money that was allocated for providing more seasonal trail work this summer, with the close of 2020, that grant fell into the, the undesigned account for the municipality. They are working on a, a, a motion to get that back out, that they'll need to take to the assembly and get it re-designated. And so we have $80,000 that's set aside for doing trail work and hiring staff this summer. We are still focused on that, and, and the Parks and Rec Department in town is working with the administration to get that back to the assembly, so that money can be put back for, for this year. So, so that, that's on hold, but we don't see any changes with Parks and Rec for this year. And then the Whittier Police, I did get confirmation, initial confirmation. Their financial person has been out, but she'll be back here shortly. But she does not see a crease. The CPI actually went down this year. And so within our contract language, the, the, the contract amount will stay the same as it was last year, so we do not see an increase there. So there'll be no change for Whittier or our police budget at this time either.
Any questions for Kyle? Mike?
I do have a question about the summer staffing. Does the staffing level depend on decisions we make about the hand tram?
No.
That was clear.
It would go hand in hand for this year, because we have that grant money. If we made the decision on the hand tram, this will be a benefit this year, having that grant money. But it will not change for 2021 because of that, that grant money from the feds.
Thank you for the clarity.
Any other comments? Questions, Kyle? Hearing none. Now we're going to move on.
Sorry, I did have a just a quick question. Do we need to act on this, or is this something we can act on next month?
Oh, yeah. I think the only thing you're going to need to act on, because since we're seeking no changes, is the fire department. So once we know more about those things, then we will act on that. So we'll, we'll remove the other two items and leave fire department on there for next Tuesday.
Okay, will we have to act on that before next, the next meeting, or can we wait until?
I think there's going to be a little caveat there, because we're so dependent on what OMB and the administration is doing with that fire department number, that if we don't make deadline, I can still push it in, and I think everybody's going to understand.
Okay, thank you.
And we do have the meeting. I can't remember the date now.
We have, we have a meeting next Tuesday for the year in review for 2020, so we can, we made that a special meeting, so we have to add anything that we can.
Yeah. Good. Thanks, Kyle. Now we're going to move on to item number six, agenda item LUC 2012-06, review updated request for GBOs resolution of support for text amendment to allow use of recycling drop-off on land designated GL1 Ruine Road Industrial and GC10 Upper Aliaska Highway Commercial. Brittany Blackledge or Crystal Hope presenting.
Hi, good evening, everybody, and I'm hoping this won't take up too much time. I have presented the previous, I think, two months. So this would be the third month, and so hopefully everybody is aware about what we're doing. But the first step in the process was to get recycling to be allowable in Gerwood. It wasn't currently allowable under any zoning, so that's what we're trying to address with this resolution. And we'll try to move it forward with a text amendment and to allow recycling on GC10 and Gerwood Industrial. And we passed at land use last week with a unanimous vote. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Just a kind of comment, it's not really a question, but you can verify this. You know, we had the presentation up, and it talks about manufacturing and all this stuff. You're not asking to manufacture anything. All you're asking for is a place to drop off recycles, recycling, correct?
Yes. Later on down the road, we're going to have to deal with the, the concept that we do have does include manufacturing of new products from the recycled plastics. But right now, we just have to get recycling to be allowable. So tonight's vote is strictly to allow recycling on those two zones, and kind of talks about why this, this resolution discusses the various reasons as to why we're trying to push this forward. trying to push this forward. We do have help from a UAA student who is seeking to do a recycling audit so we can understand how much volume Girdwood is capable of moving.
Any other questions for Crystal? So what do we have here? We have a letter of support. Resistor support. I'm trying to find the other half of it. I can't find it. Who's going to read it into the record?
I think this is my responsibility. So I'll read this resolution into into the record as a motion. So Resolution 2021 dash appropriate index of the Goodwood Supervisors Resolution of Support for Text Amendment Regarding Recycling Options in Girdwood. Whereas residents of Girdwood have come together to express interest in expanding recycling options in the Girdwood community. And whereas Girdwood Water Supervisors' rules of procedures constitute the five-member water function in the manner prescribed in this chapter, AMC Chapter 27.20 in the exercise of solid waste services. Whereas within the municipality of Anchorage, integrated solid waste master plan, the term recycling is referenced a total of 676 times. And the plan lists several goals to increase recycling and reduce unnecessary waste into landfill. And whereas recycling drop off is not specifically listed as a permitted use under any zoning area within the Girdwood Valley. And whereas recycling drop off is likely unintentionally omitted where Title 21, Chapter 9, was written. And whereas an Anchorage recycling drop off is permitted under the following zones, B1A, B1B, B3, I1, I2, PL1. And whereas Girdwood Community Land Trust Board of Directors is seeking to incubate recycling opportunities. And whereas Girdwood Community Land Trust has partnered with university student Emily House, seeking a Bachelor of Science degree with both civil and environmental engineering majors to conduct a recycling audit in Girdwood as a senior project. And whereas our project has been university-sponsored under civil engineering, environmental engineering, and civil engagement. And whereas Emily House has previously completed a project focused on extending the life of the Anchorage landfill, which won a UAA Civil Engineering Senior Design Competition and UAA College of Engineering Senior Design Competition. And whereas a space has been offered on private land, zone GC10 as a temporary site under 12 months to utilize for recycling drop off purposes. And it seems prudent to add recycling drop off on a permanent basis, the industrial area adjacent to the Girdwood Transfer Station, land zoned GI1. And whereas time of the essence to utilize Emily House's skill, knowledge, and expertise in the recycling audit. And whereas the findings of the audit will be shared with Girdwood Board of Supervisors, Municipality of Anchorage, Solid Waste Services, and others who request it. And whereas the Girdwood Land Use Committee has reviewed presentations regarding the suggested text amendment and has recommended to the Girdwood Board of Supervisors to write this Resolution of Support by a vote of 14 in favor, zero opposed, and two abstaining at the February 8, 2021 regular meeting. Therefore, the Girdwood Board of Supervisors resolves support for a text amendment of Title 21, Chapter 9, to allow recycling drop off in the following zones, GI1 Ruin Industrial District and GC10 Upper Aliaska Commercial District, and requests support from municipal agencies and departments to help facilitate and expedite this student-led and community-supported recycling project.
Thanks, Mike. Looking for a second.
Second.
Further discussion. Anybody have any further comments? Christina?
Thank you, Jerry. I appreciate it. Really looking forward to some additional recycling coming into Anchorage. Always Anchorage would always been a big advocate of it. My question is regards the availability of persons on the board to vote. Just making sure that since this is being brought forward as a Girdwood Land Trust Initiative that the Girdwood Board of Supervisors representative who also stands on the Girdwood Land Trust Board, whether or not there's been a determination of conflict of interest by the Chair this evening.
I didn't know we had somebody on the Girdwood Land Trust that is on the Girdwood Board of Supervisors. And I'm assuming it's James. Am I right?
Well, I'm not necessarily on the board, so to speak. I've been attending the meetings. I I had offered to possibly take up some action if were necessary, but I didn't know that I was officially on the board at this moment. I'll have to get back with you on that.
And so I think we should have a determination as to whether you know, this is a conflict of interest, as Christina states.
I guess it could be a conflict of interest. And I Crystal is making me aware that I am a board member. I know I did have the conversation. I just didn't. I didn't realize that I was appointed as a board member officially. So I guess I'll I'll have to get back with you guys on this.
Well, the way to work, James, is I'm going to ask you to abstain from voting on this measure this evening.
I will abstain from voting.
And unless anybody on the board has a problem with my determination as Chair, and you can overrule me if you have a problem. Mike?
I don't have a problem with your your ruling. I do notice that we don't actually have a procedure. And I don't think even the Assembly has a procedure for if somebody has a conflict and doesn't state so, doesn't state that at the beginning of the meeting. So we should probably think about that in the future.
Yeah. But we got it. We got it.
I apologize for the misunderstanding there.
No problem. Thanks. No biggie. Kaylee, you have a quiet comment?
Um, yes, I voted for this at land use and I fully support it. My question is with the what's just been read into the record, I'm wondering if this ties this in ties the hands of this to the project by the UAA student. And I'm thinking in terms of timing and and all, you know, what implications that has. I'd like it to move forward either, but I'm a little bit concerned that it seems tied to her involvement.
Crystal, can you answer that question, please?
Well, she she's doing this as her undergrad research project and, you know, she plans to graduate in December. And she was wanting to, you know, do this in the spring and over the summer. So that was why the need to, I mean, they they asked for the text amendment, I'm sorry, Anchorage Planning asked for the text amendment to be done prior to an application. So and then we will try to move through the process as quickly as possible in order to try to utilize her. So that's the timeframe on that.
Okay, that that answered my question of the timeframe. And I was just wondering if it was, yeah, that I mean, that sort of answers it. So in CLT's mind, that that is tied to her project for sure, either way. I was hoping that it was not tied to that and something that was independent of of that and the CLT was moving forward. But either way, I support it.
Any other comments or questions? Mike?
I've got two comments on the on the resolution. I'm very confused still about this. This issue in both code and in our rules and procedures about solid waste services being a responsibility of the service area. It is in code, although it seems to also be an area-wide responsibility. And again, it's something else we probably need to clear up. I would rather strike that from the resolution because there's some complexity around it, and I don't think it's relevant. So that is the second whereas. So I guess I offer that as an amendment to my earlier resolution that we strike the second whereas about solid waste services being a responsibility of the service area.
Do I hear a second for the amendment?
Where is that exactly? I couldn't find.
The second paragraph.
The second part, second whereas.
Second sentence.
It's this weird thing in Anchorage code that we, it is listed that the Girdwood Service Area is responsible for solid waste services, although it's also an area-wide responsibility. So I think we should just avoid that. Reference.
Completely.
Strike it completely. Just that one paragraph. We keep everything else. It doesn't make any difference to the to the argument.
I'll second.
And further discussion on the amendment to strike the second paragraph that states that we are part, we have function of solid waste services. Any further discussion? Mike, you have your hand up again?
Oh, sorry.
No problem. Hearing none, I would call for a vote on the amendment to strike the second paragraph which states the five-member board to function in a manner prescribed in chapter da-da-da, in the exercise of the solid waste services. So Kyle, I think you should, this is just on the amendment. Do you call a roll?
Sure. Jerry Fox?
Yes, in favor.
Mike Edgington?
Yes.
Aaron Boone?
Yes.
Brianna Sullivan?
Yes.
Passes four zero.
Next, I would call for, unless there's further discussion. Mike, you have your hand up?
Just one very quick point. Normally, what we would want is to actually see the proposed text amendment. This is so simple. It's one single thing in there that I don't think there's any need to do that this time. So I just wanted to call out this because I'm worrying, I'm thinking about procedures in the future. So this is such a simple case. I don't think there's any need to show the change we're requesting.
When you say show, just just have a table where you.
Yeah, yeah, normally, we'd normally we'd actually want to see a table and, you know, so we know exactly what the proposed change is when we support it. But in this case, it's so simple. I don't think there's a need to. In this case, maybe in the future, we'd still request it.
Well, keep in mind, you're also going to see a packet come back through when staff sends out a packet about this text amendment. And at that point, we'll see the table in the amendment.
Yeah, so it would just be, it would be nice to have a very direct example of what we're actually supporting.
Correct.
As a general principle, we should be doing this, but I don't mind in this case.
Okay, any other questions? Hearing none, I would call for a vote on the amended resolution. Kyle?
Jerry Fox?
In favor.
Mike Edgington?
Yes.
Aaron Boone?
Yes.
Brianna Sullivan?
Yes.
Motion passes four zero.
Okay. Next up, number seven, Agenda Item LUC 210107, Carolyn Haynes's request for GBOS Resolution of Support for Dimensional Variants from AMC Table 1, da-da-da-da, Dimensional Standards at 1051 Timberline. Connor is presenting. And Mike, I have to step away from my computer for just a minute. If you could take the chair for just a couple of minutes, I'd appreciate it.
Jerry, I will do that. I need, we need to hand the virtual gavel over. Connor?
Good evening, and thank you, Mike and Jerry, for recognize recognizing me. I'm Connor Scher from Z Architects, and we've been representing Carolyn Hawes in an application for dimensional variance. We're seeking to add an addition of living area as well as a two-car garage to our existing two-family house on Timberline. Specifically, we're asking a variance because the lot size is smaller than current code permits for duplexes. The lot is just over 11,000 square feet. And we'd be required to have 16,800 square feet to have a duplex. So that along with the lot width also being smaller than was required in code, those are the two variances. We came before Land Use Committee last month, as well as GBOS last month. We had a good presentation and discussion at Land Use Committee last week. There were some questions about comments from neighbors and I some of the questions were struck struck me. And and I didn't answer them completely, so I'd like to clarify my responses in that the the neighbors have have several opportunities to provide public comment. And that it's not really my responsibility to represent them at this forum. But we have, I will offer that we have had a couple of conversations with neighbors of Carolyn Hawes here, especially to the north, the the Holmeses, who have been having communication with both Carolyn and myself about the design and and some in taking into consideration some of their concerns. But as this is a public process, there are ways of submitting comments formally to the planning department as well as presenting testimony to these community meetings, as well as our public hearing, which is before the zoning board of examiners and appeals, and that is on the 11th of March. They will be hosting it at the assembly chambers, but it will be also simulcast on Teams. So anyone interested in providing comment for that should contact either myself or the planning department directly in reference case 2021 dash zero two four, I believe. It's in the, it's in the application packet. So we are requesting a resolution of support from your Board of Supervisors, and I have it open on my screen there. There's a bit of a technical problem I had to navigate with my machine. And so unfortunately, I was not able to submit the final draft before the Friday deadline. But I made the text amendments that were that were made during the Land Use Committee meeting, essentially just including their votes, which were basically unanimous in support of the application with three abstaining. So if there's any questions or further discussion, I'll try to answer those. And but I I think I'll turn it over to Mike to read the resolution into the record.
Do you want me to, do you want me to take back, I'm back, so I'll take.
Why don't you take, why don't you take the chair, Jerry?
Yeah, then you get to say, then you can.
Thank you.
Read the resolution.
So can I just clarify the difference from the, what's the difference between the resolution as provided in the packet and the 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 change resolution? Connor?
I believe the only difference is the vote tallies.
Okay.
Whereas the version showing shown in the packet just has X's for the.
I have an updated version, then, so I'll work from there. Thank you.
Okay.
So I will read, I will read as the one I have in the packet in front of me, which is Resolution 2021 dash zero two of the Goodwood Board of Supervisors Resolution of Support for Request for Variants from AMC 21.09.060B1, Table 21.09 dash five Dimensional Standards at 1051 Timberline Drive. Whereas Girdwood is a small and densely developed community within the municipality of Anchorage with very limited land for development of new housing units and long-term rentals of duplex units, sorry. And long-term rentals of duplex units provide a sustainable and affordable housing option for the community. And whereas historical development in Girdwood has created some lots of sizes smaller than currently required for duplexes, which are difficult and impossible to redevelop to suit the needs of modern use for year-round housing within current code. And whereas the existing duplex at 1051 Timberline Drive was built prior to the requirements of municipal code, has 27 2,719 square feet total living area and occupies a lot with an area of 11,046 square feet, 5,754 squared feet less than the 16,800 square feet currently required for the use. And whereas the municipal planning department has determined the property to be a legal non-conforming use of land as a duplex on a legally conforming lot of record. And whereas because the total area of land occupied by a legal non-conforming use of land cannot otherwise be enlarged, Carolyn Hawes, the owner of 1051 Timberline Drive, is requesting a dimensional variance from the minimum lot area width required for duplex in AMC 21.09.060B1, Table 21.09 dash five, in order to expand the living area of the existing building. And whereas additions of living area to existing duplexes is a right enjoyed by nearby properties that have larger lots. And whereas Carolyn Hawes is experiencing decreased mobility, and the proposed modifications will improve accessibility of the buildings and improve deliverability for all occupants. And whereas the proposed addition is 1,627 square feet, of which 935 square feet is living area, is as small as possible while providing the owner a more accommodating dwelling unit and safer access there to and takes foreseeable negative impacts to neighbors' use of property proximity and view sheds into consideration. And whereas outreach to the neighbors has included personal discussion via phone call and email, mailing comment forms, physically posting a variance hearing information, and public meetings at the Girdwood Land Use Committees of 11th of January 2021 and 8th of February 2021 regular meetings, and Girdwood Board of Supervisors 18th of January 2021 and 15th regular meetings and Gerdwood Board of Supervisors eighteenth of January twenty twenty one and fifteenth of February twenty twenty one regular meetings with no negative feedback received. And whereas the Gerdwood Land Community in their regular committee, in their regular meeting of eighth of February twenty twenty one voted twelve in favor, zero opposed and three abstaining to recommend that the GBOS provide this resolution of support. Therefore, Gerdwood Board of Supervisors supports the request for variance from AMC twenty dot zero nine dot zero six zero B one. Table twenty one dot zero nine dash five dimensional standards at ten fifty one Timberline Drive by a vote of X to Y at the regular meeting on fifteenth of February twenty twenty one.
Thanks, Mike. Uh, looking for a second.
Second.
Thanks, Aaron. Further discussion?
Um, just Connor, you may have already mentioned this, but when is the, when is the next hearing? Or the scheduled hearing in front of planning zone?
Uh, so the hearing is actually before, uh, the zoning board.
Sorry.
And that will be on the eleventh of March. Uh, their meetings start at six thirty, um, in the evening.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions on this issue? Hearing none, I will call for a vote. Kyle?
Sure. Uh, Jerry Fox?
Yes, in favor.
Mike Edgington?
Yes.
Aaron Boone?
Yes.
Brianna Sullivan?
Yes.
James Glover?
Yes.
A motion passes five zero.
Thanks, Kyle. Okay, next up, item eight.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Connor.
Thank you.
Item eight, agenda item LUC twenty one oh one oh eight, request for GBOS resolution to support for title twenty one, chapter nine, subcommittee approach to adjusting the commercial parking standards for Gerdwood. I assume you're going to speak to this, Mike?
I will. Um, so this is not about, this is not directly about the actual changes we are proposing. This is about the process we're using to, um, to propose those changes. So in discussion with planning and particularly with the, uh, with the traffic, with the traffic engineering department. What they wanted was a clear statement from the community that the approach reviews of looking at existing parking making the, um, statement that in almost every part of the municipality, it is adequate. Uh, sorry, in almost every part, every part of the service area, it is adequate. Um, and therefore making sure that our, uh, our required, uh, parking standards sort of match that, uh, a right size for the community and don't require far more than we currently have. That process, they wanted some statement of support from the community that we are comfortable with that. Um, so that's really what this is. So, let me look, yeah. So this is not, this is not approving the details of our proposal. The, the details are available on the website and we will go through that, we will go through that discussion again. As it goes through the formal, um, the formal process through planning and zoning and the assembly. This is just to support the concept that we have adequate, um, parking already for, in most of the commercial zones uh, in the municipality and, sorry, I can't say it again, in the service area, in Gerdwood itself.
So do you want to read this into the record as a motion?
I will read this into the record, yes.
Thanks.
And then I'll probably propose in a moment. So resolution twenty twenty one dash zero three of the Gerdwood Board of Supervisors. Resolution of support for amendment to title twenty one, chapter nine, commercial parking, so, code. Whereas Gerdwood is a small, compact residential and outdoor recreation community with the desire to maintain a pedestrian-friendly environment as outlined in the nineteen ninety five Gerdwood Area Plan and extensively shown in community surveys undertaken as part of the ongoing comprehensive plan rewrite. And whereas through, although adequate parking is necessary to support local commercial activities, excessive parking accommodation both detracts from the scenic qualities of Gerdwood and encourages motorized vehicle use. And whereas the Gerdwood Land Use Code in Title twenty one, Chapter nine defers to the municipal wide code of twenty chap, of Title twenty one, Chapter seven for commercial parking standards, despite the very different geography, land use regulations and transportation usage patterns of Gerdwood. And whereas meeting the current twenty one dot zero seven parking standards has been an insurmountable hurdle for almost all commercial development or redevelopment in Gerdwood since the new title twenty one adoption. And almost all current commercial uses in Gerdwood rely on grandfathered parking rights. And whereas the amount and distribution of existing parking capacity in Gerdwood meets the community's usual needs outside of special events. And whereas the Gerdwood Land Use Committee has heard updates on the process used by the Title twenty one, Chapter nine review subcommittee on several occasions and voted to recommend this GBOS resolution of support at their February eighth, twenty twenty one regular meeting by a vote of fourteen in favor, zero opposed and two abstaining. Therefore, the Gerdwood Board of Supervisors supports the process used by Gerdwood's Title twenty one, Chapter nine review subcommittee to use existing parking capacity as the basis for the parking needs of the community, passed and approved, et cetera.
So, um, are you going to make amendment to this or should we?
Why don't we see if anyone will second it first?
Hey, how do you, looking for a second?
I will second Brianna.
Thanks, Brianna. Further discussion? Mike?
I have a question.
Right, Aaron.
I'm just curious, um, why we need this at this point if it doesn't include the details of what we're, of the changes that we want to make?
So we've, we've already discussed the, the actual changes multiple times and we've done that at subcommittee. The, um, the traffic engineer wanted a clear statement in the application that the community supports the process we're using. Normally what they would want as a process is lots of parking studies. Um, and our argument is we have a parking study every single day. Where we, we basically see whether there's, um, excessive, whether there's adequate parking or not. And with the exception of the, of the area around the, um, the, basically, the sits mark area, with the exception of the sits mark area. There is adequate parking in commercial zones. So we're basically saying we have stronger evidence than a, than a parking study done over three days. Um, at some particular point in the, in the year, we have basically evidence just about every day except for special events. So we, we're basically making that claim. That's what this document is. So they wanted to see that in the, in the formal application.
Okay, that makes sense.
So I've kind of, I've kind of shown my hand a little bit there in the, the amendment I would like to make is be clear that, um, we are saying there's adequate parking except for, uh, the area in, I believe the zone is GRST one. Around the base of the resort. Uh, because there is a problem in that area which spills over onto Olympic Mountain Loop.
So where are you going to add this? Just so staff is clear?
Um, I've been debating this myself. I'm not sure of the best place, but I think what we have to do is in the fourth, whereas um, there is a whizzle word of almost all current, all current commercial uses. And, uh, I would like to change that to say all current commercial uses, um, in Gerdwood, uh, sorry. Sorry, I'm confusing myself now. Actually, I think I, I, I would put it, I would put an additional whereas in there. That's actually the, I, I was bouncing around different ideas. I'd put a different, uh, whereas, just saying the park, current parking is adequate. With the exception of the, of the base of the resort area adjacent to Olympic Mountain Loop.
So we have an amendment. Do I hear a second for the amendment?
I'll second the amendment.
Any discussion on the amendment?
Uh, this is.
I see a hand.
This is Kevin Desmond. I don't know if you can hear me.
I can hear you, Kevin. Hi.
Hi. Um, I kind of would like to repeat Aaron Boone's question of why even bring this up? Personally, because I live pretty close to, you know, the resort area. I, I'm aware of the impact of the big events. It's not just Slush Cup, it's Forest Fair, et cetera, et cetera. Uh, but is the thinking that if we have more parking, that will draw more people, that will then overload our resources? Uh, and I'm not saying pro or con, I just, what is the reason for introducing this amendment?
So, um, there's, there's a very narrow thing here, which is the narrow reason we're introducing this amendment is so we can be clear about we're making the statement there is adequate parking across all commercial areas in Gerdwood except for one, which is a special case. The reason we're doing this at all, the reason we're doing, we're writing this resolution is because the traffic engineer wanted a statement from the community that says we think parking is adequate currently in Gerdwood. The reason we're undergoing this whole activity, so the reason we're making proposed changes to the parking rules are because, um, currently the parking requirements for Gerdwood are the same as the parking requirements for, say, Midtown Anchorage. And they're all based on, um, analysis, on traffic engineering analyses, um, for suburban areas across the US where people are many miles away from the facilities, from whatever the facilities are, and most people drive. That is not the situation in Gerdwood for many of our local, um, or locally used facilities. It is the case for things which are purely tourist driven. So it is true that just about everyone drives to the gas station or to the sorrow area. It is true that, you know, a significant number of people drive to the hotel. Um, it is not true that a significant, that nearly everybody who goes to the post office or the grind drives there. So, or our other commercial, uh, other commercial entities. So behind this, um, is a is, uh, the, the, the changer, the text change to change the way the parking standards are calculated in Gerdwood. To, to make it, um, basically less onerous for commercial development, but also right size for the community. What we don't want is very large parking lots in front of everything. So, but that isn't the specific thing we're doing tonight. The specific thing we're doing tonight is filling in one of the gaps that the traffic engineer wanted to see before they could, uh, before they thought that the, the, um, the sort of formal application for this change would be complete. Uh, so.
Kevin, I'll just reiterate what Mike just said. You know, this is just something that the traffic engineer wants. The long term, what we're trying to do is actually lower the requirements for commercial parking at commercial facilities. Because, um, people like, oh, the picnic club had a problem when they went to redesign that because of the parking. Oh, no, when they went to go get the, um, alcohol permit and the ski in had a problem with parking because they want, you know, it, it just, our parking requirements don't, we don't need as much parking as they do in Anchorage. But this, all this says is they, that we want to look at the parking, I guess. I, I don't know, really describe it as well. Go ahead, Kevin, maybe I.
I didn't know if the alternative to introducing this is, I thought earlier I heard Mike saying that somebody would have to do a survey. So out of the goodness of our hearts, we're saying save the money, don't do the survey, Muni. We're good enough. And the benefit to that is we apparently don't have anything grandfathered in so that, or maybe those that are existing are where they are, but you're, the thinking is that we could not have more commercial development if we had more onerous, uh, requirements for parking spaces.
We already have the onerous, we already have, um, parking requirements which are more onerous than they need to be for this community. And, and that has two problems. The first problem is it makes commercial development harder and we've only had one piece of commercial development in the last, what is it, ten, fifteen years, which is the brewery. Um, and the second thing is we as a community don't want large parking lots. Uh, it's not, it's not really the communities, in the community's interest to have parking, to have parking areas any larger than they need to be. And current code drives larger parking facilities than we need. So, and the other reason is, you know, there's an engineer involved, so of course this becomes complex and, uh, you know, difficult to do.
You know.
Kevin and I are both engineers, as it are, and so we can, we can make that joke.
Okay, so where do we, where are we? Do we, did we, did we vote on the amendment yet?
No, you have a second. That's as far as you've gotten.
Okay, I'm gonna ask for a vote on the amendment to start.
Okay, roll call. Uh, Mike Edgington?
Yes.
Jerry Fox?
Yes.
Aaron Boone?
Yes.
Brianna Sullivan?
Yes.
Uh, James Glover?
Yes.
Uh, the amendment motion passes.
So, so next, um, I'm going to ask if there's any further discussion on the resolution, which we've had uh, read into the record and a second. So I'm asking for further discussion and after further discussion, we'll have a vote. Any further discussion on the resolution?
As amended.
As amended. Thank you.
I guess I have one question. Um, I was just thinking about, like, what you're saying, Mike, parking around the sits mark, but also the hotel and day lodge. I mean, it's, are you looking at changing any requirements for those types of parking lots?
Um, so actually not directly. There's no change to, it's actually not the hotel, the, the hotel isn't a, is an issue here. It, the, the issue is really around the, um, around the, the base area, around the sits mark. We are not making any changes to the requirements of the sits mark itself. Um, or indeed the base of the resort. They would be exactly the same. What we're acknowledging is that there is currently a problem. I mean, that currently they do not have the rock market, the, um, the parking they require under current code. They don't have the parking they will require under this amendment. So that is a separate issue, uh, to the, to the one we're addressing here. So it's, it's inadequate now, it's inadequate once we've changed the code. And the, the code change will still make it inadequate. We're just being clear. We're not saying everything is perfect in an area where clearly there are problems.
Okay.
For any other comments? Call for a vote. Kevin?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Um, Mike, if I understood correctly, um, let me cancel that thought. Sorry, Paul.
Okay, I'm gonna call for a vote on the amended resolution.
Uh, Mike Edgington?
Yes.
Jerry Fox?
Yes.
Aaron Boone?
Yes.
Brianna Sullivan?
Yes.
James Glover?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Thanks for working on this, Mike. Next up, new business. So number nine, agenda item LUC twenty one oh two oh four, discuss retiring agenda items over twelve meetings in pending status.
So I can talk about this. Um, this is, this has been more of a, um, clerical issue for us. Uh, as you'll see here at the bottom of the agenda, uh, we have several pending items and some of them have grown to, uh, twelve, if not eighteen months. And, um, we want a direction from both LUC and GBOS as to when we remove these from pending business. Um, and they become pending business after they've presented as new business. And then, um, we put them into the pending status because a lot of times items like these are things that, uh, they have to come and do their initial community, uh, presentation and then we will call them back when their packet comes in from, uh, the planning department. But as time goes by, people lose memory of these items and, um, aren't, um, maybe briefed on them or kept up the speed. And so we just want a clear guidance as to when they would drop off and, and our initial suggestion was twelve months. That's usually because you'll have a LUC committee members who will serve twelve months and then GBOS will have election every twelve months. And so, um, there'll be new, uh, people coming in possibly, uh, who will have no idea what these, uh, subjects are and, and, and they're sort of the anchor of keeping, um, tabs on different topics. So, so we're just looking for directions and we're presenting it. And I know LUC will be discussing it next month at their regular meeting.
I was to make one quick comment and then I'll call on you, Aaron. Um, my comment or question would be, so then we would have a date on these. Is that the way we would work it?
Correct. We would probably most likely assign a date as to when it was put into pending business so that we can keep tabs on when, when that was heard. So it would be the date that it was heard at and, and last, uh, discussed in meeting.
And then let's say that you came back, would you have to go through, uh, new business, dull business?
Correct. You would start the process over again so that there's a, uh, a, at least a thirty-five day review period on it, uh, on it. So, so if somebody does finally get everything figured out and, for example, presents a packet that's going to go to P and Z, um, we would definitely have them come in, make initial presentation and try to get on the calendar so that if they wanted a resolution of support from GBOS. if they wanted resolution of support from GBOS, it could be submitted for their packet that goes before whatever commission they're going before. And the other thing, you know, that, that the board and LUC can consider is that if it's acceptable to them, somebody could either send a written or in person or both presentation to LUC and GBOS on where they're at with their projects. So, and then we could add that to the pending to say update was provided on this date. So at least there's a calendar of history about what happened with that.
That's good. Aaron, you have a question?
Kyle answered it. Thanks.
And we're not going to vote on this tonight. We're just, we're gonna wait for LUC to see what they say about it. And then we might vote on something like this next meeting.
Correct, correct. And you have a hand raised, Christina.
Christina?
Hey, thanks, Jerry. Appreciate the recognition. I was unable to attend last week's land use meeting where this was introduced and wanted to provide public comment at this juncture, and I am committed to following up with this again for land use next month. I am one of those clerical impositions on the municipal staff right now. I presented on behalf of our project for Turtle Hill subdivision in January of 2020. I can understand that things change over time, but if the the circumstances were different, we didn't have a pandemic in the past 13 months that have delayed projects for a variety of reasons, as mine has been delayed by the pandemic for a variety of them. I would advocate that they stay on the list at the bottom. There are at the present, time of the presentation, meeting minutes as well as records that would bring up to speed a new board member. And I would hope that any board member would have the due diligence to go back and refresh on those. Moreover, I don't think this is in accordance with any of the code requirements for planning and zoning and for the plating boards that review the information that comes from the local communities to assess when going for a final determination and would recommend that if this does want to become a formal action, that it be staffed at the municipal level so that the planning department can weigh in on those and make sure that it's still within the code requirements for public notice at the, at the higher level that these permits are required. And I would also add to that, that not every application and packet that comes before you asks something of you. Not all of them ask for a resolution of support and not all of them ask for some of the other letters that have been written in the past 12 months. So it's presented as a means to obtain a community input, but not necessarily seek an action from land use or seek an action from GPOS. Those are my comments and I'll follow up with more detail at the land use meeting in March. Thank you.
Any other comments? Hearing none, we're gonna move on. Next up, agenda item, LUC 210206, dog park on HOB land. Kyle, you gonna talk to this or Shelley down here?
Yep, I'll talk to it. This is just in response, we've heard a lot of committee input about a potential dog park for Gerwood as a place for people to feel free to unleash their dog and allow them to run it within a fenced perimeter. One area that we have identified is at the end of Corleas Road here, down where the cul-de-sac ends. And we're looking at it for multiple purposes, one for a dog park and then two for a trailhead for the Lower Ditterod. Now with the improvements down there, the popularity has increased down there for people to use that area. And we've noticed more and more parking demand. And through our trails plan, we're recognizing that as a potential trailhead improvement. And so we're taking a, a slow approach to this, but we have looked into it within code. It looks like it is feasible to do, but there are some flat requirements and some Title 20, Chapter 9 requirements that if we were to make it a parking lot there, there is a requirement to pave it. That is part of what Mike is working on with the child, chapter, chapter nine subcommittee and, and removing that requirement to pave and then also improving the road to come to that parking lot. So there's some, there's some issues to go through there and then that's where the plat note comes in. So we're, we're gonna work through those, but we wanted to put this out to the community that we are looking into this. And, and as maybe as things become more solid for us and it looks more feasible, we will return and, and make a presentation to see there. But the initial thought would be there'd be a parking spot or parking lot down there built for 25 cars within that range. And then pretty, we would try to keep a natural base dog park in there. A fence would be installed to keep the dogs within the park. But we would try not to cut any trees and use the natural foliage, basically like we've done with the, the disc golf course where we cut to underbrush and open up the areas that there's visibility to see your dog and, and, and all that. So, so that's kind of the initial idea right now.
You're not looking for any road, road of res, uh, support or anything next meeting, you're just gonna?
No, no, and we may hold this off on the agenda as we learn more. We may not have an update the next meeting, but we'll, we'll try to bring it back as we, as we move forward. So we just wanted to put it there.
Any comments or questions for Kyle about the possibility of a dog park? Crystal?
I was just wondering, when the rule would come into effect in regards to leash, leash laws on the muni land, like that was discussed under Weddleton's update, what time period would that be in effect? And then if it's going to be in effect sooner than the dog park could be created, could we do an exemption until there is a space that would be allowable for that?
I mean, I'll kind of comment on that. You know, you get into dogs and leash laws and everything, we, you'll get everybody and his brother out here coming to these meetings. That I would assume that the new, if the assembly passes the leash law, it would happen within the next three or four months. And this project here will take longer than three or four months. So I, and it's a municipal thing they're gonna pass, so, you know, it'd be difficult for us to get in there and say, we don't want leash laws in Gerwood because you'd have a lot of people come out and say they did, I think. That's just my comment, my opinion.
And I'll just state, you know, for order, John talked about this a little bit tonight, I mean Suzanne, one of the two, but the assembly hasn't seen a proposal yet on this, so it is not within their queue yet for new or old business or to be voted on. So I think it's still being drafted and worked out, so we don't know what the details are at this point.
But you would agree that a dog park in Gerwood is not going to happen before the leash law will happen?
No, it will not.
Crystal, did I answer your question or not?
Yeah, yes, you did. I just kind of pointing out the fact that once, if and when that leash law comes into effect, that maybe we want to make some clarifications for our own Gerwood area as to before there's a allowable area for that.
Yep, I got you. Mike?
I was just gonna say that the, 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 the basic facts of the leash law are unlikely to change that much. It's, it's really more about some of the details and particularly in trail use, whether voice control is adequate. So that's the sort of area of discussion at the moment. So the, the general principle will be very similar to what we have now. I mean, it can change because it's only, it's only a proposal that's being discussed and there will be many changes probably to it.
Any other comments about the dog park? Hearing none, I'm going to move on. Gerwood Trail Committee request for GBOS residents to support for KMTA 5050 matching grant for research, writing, fabrication, installation of interpretive signage for Stumpy's Early Winter Trail. Grant application is due March 12th.
So we are putting this as new business and we are working with the Gerwood Trails Committee and the Faulkner family on a interpretive sign for Stumpy Faulkner in the winter trail. And so we will most likely be returning to seek a resolution of support. And we may do that at our next meeting, which is next Tuesday. As to the grant application is due before your next regular meeting, or we may call for a special meeting before that. But the GBOS or the Gerwood Trails Committee is, is pursuing this grant. And so we may be back to seek that before your next meeting.
Mike has a question.
Yeah, just where, where is the plan to put the signage?
Well, two ideas are being tossed around and this all has to be clarified before we come back to you again. But one would be there at Moose Meadows Parking Lot where the, the Stumpy Winter Trail sign is. And the other one would be out at the Nordic 5K in the, at the, at the parking lot out there, somewhere within the range where the trash can is right now. So we're, we're examining those two areas. There's favorability in each direction. We just need to hammer it down.
Thanks.
Any other questions? So we may vote on this as soon as next week, is that correct?
Correct.
I don't hear you see any more comments or questions, so we're gonna move on. Number 12, Gerwood Forest Fair 2021, Karen Zakaro, Tylee Bell presenting. And since I don't see either one of those and I see Tommy on here, are you presenting Tommy? Tommy, are you there? Are you on mute? I see Teresa's iPad and I think that's where Tommy was from.
I can give an update as to.
Oh, here, here he comes. Tommy, you there? Nope, he went back on mute again. Okay, why don't you give an update, Kyle?
So as of right now, we've started the initial permitting process for the Gerwood Forest Fair for 2021. And as we're well aware, the municipality is still under emergency order, which limits gathering sizes. And so at this point in time, a large fair could not happen. But we're watching for changes with that and, and, and the hope is, is that those restrictions will allow for the fair to happen. But permitting and things like that could be fairly rushed at the end. So from, from staff side and the Parks and Rec side, that's currently where we're at. But they have filled out all the initial paperwork that we normally do. And so we're all set there. We're not taking payment on that aspect. And at one point I didn't get a chance to make earlier is that we're not taking any fees this year for alcohol sales or anything like that with the change in the, the, the taxation, no longer can Parks and Rec collect that. And so that won't be a factor that we do anymore. So the initial permit fees paid upfront will be all that Forest Fair pays this year.
Tommy, are you out there?
Yes, I can report from a Forest Fair meeting on Sunday, yesterday, that April 1st is the date that the Forest Fair Committee will announce whether we try and go ahead or go with a virtual Forest Fair. As Kyle said, some of the processes and permits take up to three months to, to work its way through the bureaucracy. For example, the, the noise permit takes three months. So you have to start early, whether or not it can happen or not. I, personally, I doubt that the municipality will allow events of 10,000 or 18,000 people to happen, to permit that because that would, they would be permitting or they would be liable for making that permit happen. But again, we are hopeful, the Forest Fair is hopeful, and April 1st will be the date that they'll make that determination of whether to go ahead or to decide.
Thanks for the update, Tommy. Hopefully we'll all be out of this pandemic soon, but we'll, we'll just have to see how it goes. Any questions about Forest Fair? Mike, you have a comment?
Yes, I had, had two questions. So one is for Tommy, you said the April 1st is the date at which you decide whether to go ahead to try to start the permitting work. But is that the, is there a later date for basically a go, no-go decision? So even if you have to start the permitting and then, you know, a month later it's clear that it's not going to work?
April 1st will be the, the date that the Forest Fair Committee decides whether to go forward or not. We are starting, we have started bidding process with Kyle and with the MOA for parade permits for all, all those things that take so long for the contracts for porta potties, all those things. You can't, it takes about four months to get the Forest Fair up and going. It, it's creating a villa and yeah, so, but April 1st.
Thank you for the clarification. I missed it earlier. My, the second comment is possibly directed at John Weddleton. So I know John earlier said about the, you know, it's unclear what the process will be for sort of closing, you know, taking away the emergency declarations and things like that in the municipality. And I wondered about the, if it's clear, if it's clearer that there's a positive trajectory in, in cases and the general sit and vaccines and the general situation. Is there likely to be some sort of transitional space or, you know, would it just suddenly stop? And what do we do about events that take several months to plan when it looks like we may be in a safe space by the time they're happening? But four months beforehand, it's unclear.
Is that directed to me?
It is, John, yes. If that's okay.
You, it's fine.
Through the chair is the phrase I'm supposed to use.
You, you are in absolute uncertainty. I mean, sports tournaments and things like that have been under this too. I mean, we're on a great track, trajectory now and I would expect things would mellow out. But we also on July 1, we'll have a new mayor and that could be, who knows, you know, but Great Barrington Declaration or tighten up, who knows? So I, I can offer no insights.
I would just make the comment that the town of Great Barrington and their town council don't like it being called that.
Yeah, it's quite a story. I call it call the herd, Great Barrington, call the herd.
So I think I'm gonna move on. I think we'll hear more about this as time goes on. Next up, number 13, Gerwood Bearware, Elena. Update on GBA activities, recommendations for changes in the Secure Trash Regulation Zone Ordinance Language, defective bear resistant cans, fee structure for Gerwood Station. And who's gonna, is, I don't, is Lena on here?
I am here. Yeah, I just got my baby to sleep just in the nick of time.
Yay!
Yay, yeah. So hi, thanks for having me. Yeah, and I'll just do a, because it's late, I'll just do a really quick update. As everybody knows, we had a busy bear year last summer. And part of that was as a result, I think of the defective trash cans, which I'll talk about later. But it was just, I think generally a busy bear year. So we, you know, we as volunteers were running pretty ragged, truthfully. You know, Mike and John and I, and we're out there a lot physically, you know, meeting with people, talking about their trash cans, cleaning up trash and actually using slingshots to actively deter bears in many cases. So it was a, it was a definitely learning experience summer for us. Thanks to GPOS and some other donors, it was a really great experience working with Niels and Wind River Bear Institute while he was here. I think that was really effective for a number of reasons. And we're already talking with him about possibilities of returning again this coming summer, which will be really exciting. We're wrapping up a KMTA grant that we were successful receiving a year ago now and got publications and education materials published. So those should be on the street for next summer. So those should be on the street for next summer. And we have some other funding that we have available to continue our electric unwelcome map program. So that was also something that was successful last summer. And we also were successful with funding that we were hoping to put towards actually having a paid employee for the summer. So it could be a really different summer for Gerwood Bearware, and we're pretty excited about that. I think one thing we were hoping to engage G boss with is support for some of the amendments for the secure trash regulation zone. And that's what Kyle has up on the screen here. You know, we worked really closely with code enforcement last summer responding to, you know, unfortunate situations with garbage and and people who weren't familiar with the regulation or weren't adhering to it. And so through working with code enforcement, it became clear both for us and for them, really where there was space for improving or clarifying the ordinance. So there's just a couple of places I put here on this document that I think could we could work on clarifying. And in talking to Mike, you know, I'm not sure exactly the whole process for this. But I think we would hope to have G boss support for these amendments, given that, of course, the secure trash regulation zone only affects Gerwood right now. Or wait, is Gerwood and one other area, Mike? I can't remember.
Declune Valley, I think it is.
Yeah, where there's like four people, so mostly just us. Yeah, so if you want me to, I mean, in the essence of time, I can read these. I'm sure you've read them. I'm not really, not exactly clear. You guys will have to help me with the processes. Do I formally ask for your support for these amendments, or how do I move that forward?
I'll I'll start by a point of order. I need somebody to make a resolution to continue the meeting past ten.
I move that we continue the meeting until ten fifteen.
I second that.
Voice vote, all in favor, say aye, aye.
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 Okay, now back to Lena's question. You want to answer it, Mike?
Yeah, I think we can, we can basically take the take the document here and and use that as a basis for a suggested change. And then we will work with one of our, one of our assembly members to get it introduced. I don't know if there's, I know for title twenty one, we can introduce things. I don't know if that's true for other titles, so I'll work with, we can work with John Susan to get that done. Probably John, since this would be under his his committee.
Okay. In here, there is something about the fee structure for the Gerwood Transfer Station. What's, what does that have to do with Bearware?
Yeah, well, that's, I think, in order of how Margaret put this on the agenda, she had me, she wanted me to talk about defective trash cans and then the fee structure. So the municipality, they increase the fees for the Gerwood Transfer Station. So it used to be that it was a cost savings if you chose to use the transfer station versus having curbside trash service. And with the increase in fees, that's less so. So, for example, my family, we usually just generate one bag of garbage a week, sometimes two. We do not have a garage, so we don't have a secure place to store garbage if we start to accumulate more than what fits in our can inside. So before the the transfer station, it was two dollars a bag, one dollar additional bags. So essentially, you could drop twice for four dollars a week. Now, that would be about what it would cost to have curbside service. And if you were only dropping once a week, it's about half of it, hence the cost savings. Well, now, if it's four dollars a drop, the cost savings is essentially not there. And it's actually more expensive to use the transfer station if you're going to use it multiple times a week. So what that means for Gerwood Bearware and as a good segue into having defective bear resistant trash cans is it may mean more people are going to be interested in having curbside service. Now, normally, that might not be a problem, but because we do not currently have a bear resistant trash can that functions the way it should, it is a problem. And so what we discovered last summer is that the type of bear resistant trash can that Alaska Waste has chosen to use is made by a company called Rare Pacific. And the latching system that they have implemented to make the can be quote unquote bear resistant is defective. And so it was sent back to I G B C for certification, and it's now listed as on provisional status. Because when it was sent back, it failed retesting, which we knew it would do because it's failed miserably in field testing. But what we don't know now is how Alaska Waste is going to fix this problem. And it means in terms of the ordinance that we're kind of in a gray zone, and Alaska Waste is kind of in a gray zone. Does their bear resistant can meet the intent of the ordinance? Is it actually proving to be effective in securing trash for bears? I would personally say no to both of those questions right now. But it's, you know, it kind of remains to be seen how they're going to handle this a little bit. The information we've been given so far is that their answer to the problem is that they're not going to replace any trash cans unless they get a complaint from the customer. So that obviously puts the responsibility on the customers and on groups like ours to call them and harass them into doing the right thing. So as you can probably tell, I have a lot of concerns about this going forward.
And do they have a trash can that does work now?
Well, they could have one if they bought a new one. The company that made the trash can that's defective has to resubmit the latch for testing in the spring. And they claim they've fixed the problem, but it won't be recertified until springtime. So probably at the earliest, we'll know maybe May first if the new latch passes certification. But again, the Alaska Waste's current answer is that they're not going to replace the defective latches with the newly certified latches unless they get complaints. Because it's a lot of, I can't, I can't, it's a would be a monumental task for them to recall essentially all their bear resistant trash cans. So I get it. It's kind of a big problem for them. But it kind of puts us in a bind.
Mike, I see you put your head set back down. You have a comment?
Yeah, I guess so. The I think the, there's this problem that, I wouldn't say a problem. I think there was a set of assumptions when the when the regulations were put together, when the code was updated, that that if something meets certification, it's good enough. It turns out that what appears to have happened is the manufacturer got an initial design certified, got complaints from some of the waste companies, changed it so it was much easier to open by their by their automatic trash pickup machines. And in the process, made it also far easier for bears to open, but did not recertify. So they basically got version one certified and then put version two in the field, and version two failed abysmally. So nobody in this process, the the I G B C that we've been talking to, they don't, they don't really know what to do because they didn't expect this problem to occur. You know, the manufacturer is kind of, the Alaska Waste is kind of stuck because, you know, they didn't make this decision either, the manufacturer did. So everyone's kind of in this space if we're not quite sure what the right thing to do is. And the code definitely was not written with the assumption that something would meet certify certification, and then it would effectively be withdrawn, which is what's happened this time. So we're in this kind of weird, as Elena said, in this very gray space at the moment. And it looks like the code isn't didn't wasn't written with anticipation of this condition of this situation. And nobody's quite sure the right way to do it, unless, you know, the right way is Alaska Waste throw a bunch of money at it and maybe sue the manufacturer in the future. But obviously, that's their decision, not ours. And what we want is just something that has where the community gets the best outcome, which is, you know, less danger to people, less danger to the animals.
So, sorry, I might have missed it, but are any new trash cans that Alaska Waste is providing of a different design?
No.
I I don't know.
They're the same.
No, they're all the same.
Okay.
It's the latching mechanism itself where the problem lies. It's not so much the can, it's the latch.
But the latch on new ones that they're giving to new cut potentially new customers would be the same as the problem latches?
Yeah, well, they don't have new latches yet. The only information we have is that they were maybe shipped three new latches to try out, but Alaska Waste hasn't confirmed that. And like I said, we will, none of the new latches will pass certification until springtime. So, you know, they, I don't think that Rare Pacific is going to be distributing new latches until they receive that certification in the spring. And that's if they receive it. It has to go through the testing still.
That's concerning.
The reason it can't be done until spring is that bears need to be awake. So to do the to do the testing at their test site in Montana. So that can't be sped up.
They could always have you go do the testing, Mike.
I knew you were gonna say that, Jerry.
Any other comments about Bearware? I think you're doing a great job. It's, I know it's frustrating, and I don't have a good answer for you. Well, we support you wholeheartedly, though.
Thanks, Jerry. Yeah, that's okay. I think we have to sort of wait a little bit and see things unfold. You know, part of the reason we want to get the code as clear as possible is that it's really our only, you know, regulatory answer to this situation. And it does require, in a certain sense, that the municipality pays attention to this issue. And so, you know, that's kind of our starting point right now is, you know, engage the municipality on this level and hopefully that they're aware then that, you know, these cans may not be meeting the intent of this ordinance and then figure out how to address that at that point.
I would just add that this is, this has become, many communities have found this same problem that I think we were, we were early in the process of identifying the issue. But it's, there are now multiple communities across North America who are having the same problem with this particular can. So, you know, we're, I think the fact we were fairly early means Goodwood is not sort of a little bit fairly well known as, you know, a location where we're taking this problem seriously. And I think Anchorage as well, being an area that's taking this problem seriously. So it's kind of good P R for the community.
So are you gonna supply a to changes to the code for net for us to support next meeting? Is that the plan, Mike?
Yes, I think that'll be the plan.
Okay.
So we'll take these comments and have at least something provided, and I will share that with John as well.
Yeah. Because, yeah. Okay.
Can I chime in briefly?
Yes.
So, Mike, you want to go through it and make changes and then send those to me? Because Elena has sent these to me as well.
Oh, yeah, well, basically, this, no, it's the same thing. It'll just be, I'll have just suggested language, and then we can noodle that.
I'll wait for that then, and then I'll send it to our attorneys. Is that, is that the way to go?
Actually, if your 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 attorneys are going to be better at doing it than I am, they're the professionals. So maybe the best thing to do is all I'd be doing is just making my my guess. So it's probably best to send what you have now to the attorneys.
Okay, let's do that then.
Thank you.
Well, yeah, and I just wanted to know, I don't know how much code enforcement wanted to weigh in on what the changes should be, right? So I don't want to go over their heads either. That's why I didn't make suggested changes. I just sort of pointed out where they might want to make those changes. I know Brad and Jack have looked at this before, and they've looked at it over the summer. So I'm sure they have ideas for how to make these changes.
It'll definitely go, it'll definitely go through departmental review.
Yes, for sure. Okay, well, thank you. Thanks.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, thanks for taking the time to allow me to join you. Sorry, it's so late today.
Thank you for being here. Thank you for all the work you do. Next up, we're gonna move on. Number fourteen, Gerwood Trail Committee recommendation for G B U S vote to approve memorandum of understanding with Alaska State Parks, Chugash State Park, Kyle Kelly presenting. And we have it on the screen, a memorandum of understanding.
Yep, so this is a M O U that we've created with Chugash State Park. It's gone through both set of lawyers on each side, and it is very similar to what we've done with the U S Forest Service in the sense that we create a relationship, a recognized relationship between the two entities and work together on trail projects that work within the Gerwood Valley. You know, particularly Abe's, California, and Beaver Pond, both venture onto Chugash State Park lands. Over time, the Gerwood Trails Committee has become the stewards of those trails as Chugash State Park has limited funding and resources to deal with this side of the park. And so trail improvements, things like that have been done on their portion of the land through individual agreements. But this would create a solid relationship between our our departments so that we can continue to work on it. And it sort of spells out the fact that even though we were going to put money into it and we would mostly be using grant money to work on any of the trails that cross their lands as we can't use tax dollars because it would be outside the service area, they would, you know, Chugash would retain the ownership and any improvements that had been made within within those areas. So so that's what we have here, and it's something for you to read, and we'll be looking for a vote at next month's meeting.
Sounds like a good idea. I don't, is there any comments? I don't really think there is. We'll have, like you say, we'll vote on it next time, but it sounds like a good project you've been working on. So thanks, Kyle.
Just one quick question. Did it was there, was there much to infer with the with other departments in the municipality? Or is this, because this is, I know this is somewhat similar to the to the one we have the Forest Service, or was this kind of just accepted?
Well, the the other department that we work closely with this on was H L B as
All right.
Their land is 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 within this these boundaries and our trails cross upon. So Robin Ward has reviewed it. She's approved of the M O U as well, so.
Okay, I wasn't sure if Parks and Rec had something similar on the other side of the park of the Chugash State Park.
They may, but we followed a template that's worked really well for us. And it gives us a standard so that if we can, when we're thinking about both, they're very similar. There's details different, but they're very similar overall.
That makes sense. Thank you.
Any other comments on this questions? If not, I think we've made it to the end of our agenda. Would entertain a motion if I'm if I'm on the right page here.
You're good.
Yep. So I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to John.
I can.
Thanks, everybody. Thanks, John, for staying around.
My pleasure. See you, guys.
Thanks. Have a good night, everybody.
Bye.